Everybody's anxious to dive into the budget, so let's come to order, please. Welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Council Meeting of May 15th. Could I have a roll call, please?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Barbara Spector.
Here.
Councilmember Mariko Sayak.
Here.
Councilmember Marcia Jensen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Lee and Artis.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Rob Rennie.
Here. All right, so at this time, I will ask our pledge leader, Leah Mayer, to come up and join me. We will move the chair out of the way, so people can see us. Come on over here. So first thing we're going to do is we're going to tell everybody about you. You're Leah Mayer, and let's see, you're in the second grade at Van Meter. Do you like Van Meter? Is that a good school?
Yes.
Yeah, good school? Okay, good. It says your favorite subjects are singing, dancing, drawing, math, reading, yoga, running, writing, hanging out with your beasties, and standing on your head. You could...
Besties.
Besties, okay. The standing on your head part, that's like being on council. So you've got a good start. So, okay, so let's ask everybody to stand. And I'm going to give the mic to you and ask everybody to join us, and go ahead and start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good job. Okay, so go give Councilmember Marcia Jensen a handshake, and our Vice Mayor, if he can get through the chairs. So let's give our pledge leader one more thank you. Okay, so next up, I'm going to ask Kirsten and John Dryden to join me. We have a commendation. I guess we just get Kirsten. No, John?
He's there.
Oh, okay, he's not going to join us. So you are the owners of Automobilled, and you opened on Main Street in 2010, and you've since moved to Santa Cruz Avenue. You took over the pet store. We're sorry to see the pet store go, but you're a very good replacement. Let's see, you have an extensive inventory of toys and gifts for the young and the young of heart. That's good. And you have birthday parties and complimentary gift wrapping. And Automobilled supports the Los Gatos community through employing students, offering give-back shopping opportunities, and donating to school fundraisers. So therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Los Gatos does hereby render with special appreciation and commendation to the Dryden family and Automobilled for over eight years of service to the Los Gatos community. Would you like to say something?
I just would like to say thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be part of the town, and it's wonderful to be part of the community and to give back and to hire so many high school kids that everybody should be proud of. And it's great to bring fabulous toys to the community, because there's not that many that are good out there, so it's great to find them and bring them to the community.
Sounds good. So let's get a picture with them. Okay, so next up, I'll invite our Finance Director. Is he here somewhere? Oh, there he is. We have the Distinguished Budgeting Presentation Award, and you have to do weightlifting before you receive that, I think. So we've won, you've won the award for Los Gatos yet again. I don't know how many years in a row this has been. And we get this when we meet all the requirements for good budgeting, reporting, and organization. Did you want to say anything that you haven't said over all the past how many years? How many years are we up to?
I was just taking time to reflect on this. This is our 18th year in a row, and I know it was 18 years ago, because I started on my first year with the town was 2001, and I started my job a week before the budget was due to be approved. And a little tale from how times have changed, when I took, or when I got into my new office, the prior person said, "The budget's all there. It's on the adding machine tape." And it was about a 40-foot-long tape with subtotals of all the departments going out my door. And then I took those numbers and put them into an Excel spreadsheet, and we joined the 20th Century about 18 years ago. And that was a lot of fun, and with a week to go, and we made it. And so this budget this year, through this award, I think, you know, it's very much a team effort. It isn't a one-person job by any stretch of the imagination. It's a total organizational effort. We all start with the council, who sets the strategic goals and the plans, and we deliver with a budget we think helps you achieve your goals. So it's really a town-wide effort. It's not just a finance word. But we, I accept this on behalf of everyone else. So thank you.
So congratulations. Oh, do we need a picture? Okay, so next up on the list is council and Town Manager Reports. We'll start with Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last regularly scheduled meeting of the council, I attended Chief DeSantis' swearing-in. Congratulations and welcome to your first budget hearing. And I also met with members of our community on finance and development issues.
Thank you. Councilmember Sayak.
Thank you. Since our last regularly scheduled meeting, I attended the Cities Association of Santa Clara County. They had their general meeting, as well as their executive committee meeting. And on Friday, I attended an accessory dwelling unit panel discussion hosted by the Housing Trust, and it just looked at what financing and process improvements cities can do to help move more ADUs into production.
Great, thank you. Since the last meeting, I attended the chief's swearing-in and made some comments and welcome, and welcome again, chief. I also did two ribbon cuttings for Audiology, which has been in Los Gatos for a long time, but they moved over to Los Gatos Almond and Boulevard, Los Gatos, Almond and Road. And also, a new game store, well, it's not new, new to our area called Warhammer, which moved in, I guess where out of the envelope was. And let's see, I attended Lieutenant Langer's retirement celebration for the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority. I attended the Legislative Ad Hoc, the board meeting. They also had a workshop, and I attended the Oversight Committee. I also attended a panel discussion with the Mayor of Saratoga with Silvar, the Silicon Valley Realtors Association, where they asked us questions, kind of in a panel style. And I also attended the Cities Association Board Meeting. Thank you. Vice Mayor Leonartis.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Since our last regularly scheduled meeting, I also attended Chief DeSantis' swearing-in. It was a great ceremony. I attended the Sheriff's Best in the West Competition. I attended a Veterans Memorial Meeting, a gubernatorial debate with Councilmember Spector and Councilmember Sayak, also in attendance. I attended the West Valley Sanitation District Board of Directors Meeting, and the main item of business was the rates for the sewer will be going up 5.7 percent for the next five years running. And I have a pamphlet I will give to the staff describing that. We also had the very first, in its new incarnation, West Valley Clean Water Program Authority Meeting at Monta Serena City Hall. So we used to have the West Valley Clean Water Program. It was kind of spun off by the West Valley Sanitation District, and now the City of Saratoga is acting as the host city, and we're bringing it back under a new authority. So it was the genesis, the very beginning of the West Valley Clean Water Authority. And last but not least, I attended a general business meeting for the West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority. That is your garbage and recycling pickup.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. We'll go to the Town Manager.
Thank you. On June 2nd, we are kicking off summer reading with our big truck day out in front of the library, so please come. Generally, the event starts around 10 o'clock in the morning. We'll have fire trucks. We'll have trucks from our PPW yard. It's usually a lot of fun, and we'll be continuing our family-run programs for the library. Thank you.
You should invite that truck that was chopping the tree up from across my house yesterday morning. You should have seen the size of the limbs they stuck in that one. All right, so thank you. So next up, we have our consent calendar, consisting of items 1 through 5. Would any member of the council wish to pull an item from consent? Seeing none, would any member of the public wish to pull one of the items from consent? No cards with the clerks, seeing none. Okay, I'll come back to the council for a motion or discussion or questions. Motion. Councilmember Jensen.
Move approval at the consent calendar consisting of items 1 through 5.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any comments, recusals? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yeah. Any opposed? Seeing none. It passes unanimously. We are up to verbal communication, where members of the public have three minutes to talk to us about items that are not on tonight's agenda. And I may, are you, Catherine Summers is our first volunteer.
Good evening, council. Where the heck are all the people? I was expecting a lot, so I'm just going to really be giving this to all of you. I just wanted to remind you, or excite you, about the fact that we are having a photo contest in Los Gatos. The Chamber of Commerce is hosting it, and it is to discover through your own lens what is the look and feel of Los Gatos as it relates to architecture, landscape, and the people or the community. So thus far, we've had probably 20 submissions of photographs, and we will be judging these. The contest runs May 1st through May 31st, and then our panel of judges is going to be looking at the photographs during the first two weeks of June. We will then be awarding the First, Second, and People's Choice Awards at the Hotel Los Gatos on June 28th. But it's kind of a fun contest. Our judges, we have the Honorable Rob Rennie on our panel of judges. We have Sir Michael Caine, as he likes to call himself, on the panel. Judy Peterson, George Saxted, and Patty Rice are president of the Chamber of Commerce. So it'll really be a good look at what is the look and feel of Los Gatos through the lens of a lot of different people that live here. So I just wanted to tell all of you about that. I also wanted to congratulate the small business, big applause, because they are my neighbors and my travel buddies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Summers? Seeing none, thank you very much. Would anybody else wish to speak to us on an item not on the agenda? Seeing nobody coming forward, I will close the verbal portion of our evening and move on to public hearings. We have item number six, which is our operating and capital budgets, and I'll turn it away, turn it over to our Finance Director to get us started.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to actually kick this one off. As our Finance Director mentioned, putting together a budget is truly a team effort that involves all of the town departments. I do want to recognize the directors and administrative staff who are here with us tonight to answer your questions about the proposed budget. They worked very hard to get us to this point today, and we're very pleased to present to you the proposed capital, as well as operating budget. Let's see. Okay. So this evening, we're going to talk through the budget. You should have copies of the slides at your table to follow along. We also have copies available for the audience that staff will be providing, so that way the public has an opportunity to see the slides. You know, as you put together a budget, it's really important to build on the good work of past councils and prudent fiscal management. So we are going to talk a little bit about some of our past accomplishments. We're also going to talk about the present, in terms of what are our current goals and strategic priorities that have gotten us to where we are. And then we also need to look forward to the future. We need to make sure that we are planning, continuing to plan in a fiscally prudent way, so that way we can anticipate trends and adapt our service delivery to meet our community's ongoing needs. And we do all of this following the best professional municipal financial management practices and procedures. The slide on the screen essentially illustrates what our budgets have looked like for the past several years. The detail is, I know, a little bit challenging to read, but I think the big-picture colors kind of tell the story. And essentially, the solid purple line at the very top is total revenue, and the blue bars, the upper ones, and then the blue bars are the expenditures. So you see that every year, we've had revenues that have exceeded our expenditures. The orange bars on top of that is our capital expenditures. So every year, we make a conscious effort to contribute to investing in our public infrastructure. In addition, in some years, we dip into our reserves for planned purposes. So you will see a green bar about midway through the graph that exceeds the revenue bar, but that's money that was actually set aside for a deliberate purpose. And back in 1314, the council said, "We would like to pay off our side fund debt, and that way we can essentially reduce our unfunded obligation." So that was a very conscious choice, but as you can see, year after year, revenue exceeds expenditures for the Town of Los Gatos. In addition, our town has been very proactive addressing unfunded liabilities. As was mentioned earlier in the evening, we've been following this issue since 2009, when the council created a trust for our other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as retiree healthcare. And we put, since we started that in 2009, we put away $14.5 million, and that is additional discretionary spending on top of the regular obligations that we have to pay year after year. As you know, this council in 2016 created a pension and reserve for similar purposes with a policy goal of setting aside $300,000 additional as an annual minimum. And then last year, we created the 115 Pension Trust. So again, we could manage our money in a more aggressive way, based on the advice of our Council Finance Committee, as well as our Council Oversight Committee, and to date, that is adding up to about $4.3 million. So total, since 2009, on the trajectory that we're at, we've already put aside an additional $23.3 million towards addressing our unfunded obligation. We're available to answer more details on this as the presentation continues, but it's really important that we highlight that the council has been proactive, we've been ahead of the curve in terms of other California cities getting our arms around this particular issue. In addition, like other municipalities in California, we've had to weather some recessions. And how did we do that? Well, we did what most cities do. We had to cut our staff. So we cut employees down pretty dramatically with the first recession in '05, and then again in 2010. And basically, we're kind of at, we're holding at about 148 full-time equivalent staff. So we are continuing to deliver very high-quality services at a low, very lean funding ratio, considering the high level of services that we are providing. So you'll see, back in 2001, we had a headcount of 180, and even with this budget, we're not proposing anywhere near that kind of increase. So what is a budget? I know we've had conversations in the past, but we thought, for purposes of this presentation, we might want to just kind of bring it down to basics. So we all know that for our own home purposes, we need to plan for our own expenditures. So if we consider our home budget with the income that we receive through a paycheck or through dividends, or whatever your income sources are, that's basically your revenue side. And then we have expenses. We have to pay the water bill, PG&E, our mortgage, et cetera. And hopefully, you know, our expenses are less than our revenues, and so we have some money that we can put into savings, that we can then put towards other things. And that could be purely discretionary items. It could be a family vacation. It could be college for the kids. It could be a needed home remodel, or it could be that emergency repair for the automobile or replacing the dishwasher, et cetera, as well as our own future retirement. So our home budget is very much analogous to our town budget. Here, for the town, our revenue sources are property tax and sales tax. Our expenditures are primarily salaries and benefits, since we are a service organization. And then, because we budget prudently, we typically have some money left over that we also can put into our own savings account for the town. And then that enables us to do our special projects, like paying down the pension, or paying for capital improvements, or being prepared for an unforeseen circumstance, like an earthquake or something else. So our budget is similar and analogous. And again, through prudent budgeting, we've been able to prepare and plan accordingly and find that balance point between those different needs. So specifically, as, again, as Director Conway mentioned, our budget really needs to be based on the foundation and framework of the council's and the community's goals and strategic priorities. The budget also establishes funding levels for the delivery of town services, and this is really our benchmark, so we know how we can spend the money over the course of the year to repair sidewalks, fix the air conditioning unit, trim the trees, replace the carpet in the library, et cetera. And it's also a forward-looking document, so that we can plan for the future and guide us as events change. So what are the core goals for Los Gatos? Back in February, we reinforced that we have several goals. These include good governance. We want to follow best practices. We care a lot about community character, so a photo contest on look and feel is right along with that community character. We spend a lot of time on land use issues. It's really important that we have quality public infrastructures, that our road is safe, that the pipes work, that the streets drain, et cetera. Public safety is just crucial for all of us. Civic enrichment is another core goal. We really value our volunteers on our boards, commissions, and committees, and thank you for those of you who are here with us tonight. It's really important that our community be part of the deliberative process here in the town. And again, fiscal stability. This council has, I'm very proud of the council's fiscal responsibility for the Town of Los Gatos. These core goals are reflected very expressly in the distribution of the dollars in our budget. So you'll see, a good chunk of the money goes towards public safety, public infrastructure, community character. So those are the big items, and they reflect the key goals of our community. In terms of strategic priorities, again, in February, we had a very robust discussion. We recognize that we have some work that is currently underway that we want to finish, namely, the Almond Grove Street Reconstruction Project. That's definitely underway. We also recognize that some of our issues are not one-time items anymore. It's not as simple as finishing an ordinance and checking it off the list. Now we have some ongoing commitments that we need to address, and these include the pension and OPAB liabilities. It includes figuring out how we're going to continue to address summer cut-through traffic. In addition, council said, "Let's try some new initiatives. Let's be innovative." So we are recommending that we prepare a comprehensive parking plan to look at employee parking, paid parking, high school parking, and really figure out a comprehensive approach. Let's look at emergency preparedness and what our strategic investments need to be so that we are prepared. And let's pilot one-way streets. Let's see what happens if we turn Santa Cruz and University into one-way streets. So there are some new initiatives that you will see reflected in the proposed budget. Okay, with this, I will turn it over to Director Conway.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Rennie, members of council. I'm Steve Conway, Director of Finance. My pleasure to be here tonight and talk about the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. First off, I'd like just a quick review of, you know, we have a slide up here titled, "What's a Fund Anyway?", and just a brief covering on that, that the town administers a number of funds. Our primary fund, each fund is like a checkbook that you might keep for various purposes if you had an organization where you wanted to keep a checkbook for various things. The general fund is our largest checkbook, and that is what houses our main operations that the Town Manager just referred to, our public safety, our public works, our community development, all of our operating departments. We have a number of other funds that are smaller funds. They are delineated separately, because they each have a separate purpose. A special revenue fund is a fund, for example, that gas tax monies we receive from the state of California must be put in a special revenue fund and can only be used for street purposes. So that goes in the gas tax checkbook. A debt service fund is a checkbook that pays our debt for our COP obligations. The capital projects funds that the town has, those funds accumulate, those are usually transferred from our general fund, and they sit there to be available to accomplish our infrastructure and our capital improvements during the year. Internal service funds provide services back to the town. For instance, when we need to replace our fleet, or when we need to maintain our vehicles, or we need to maintain the facilities, we have an internal service fund that accomplishes those specific goals and provides those services back to the operating departments of the town. And then we have our trust and agency funds, which are money we hold on behalf of others. Those checkbooks are things like a trust fund. When someone bequeaths money to our library, we have a library trust fund that we administer, and we use that money for specific purposes as defined in the trust when the money is donated to the town. So moving to the next slide, what we have tonight is a budget, and the budget that we're going to be talking about mostly is our general fund budget. And our key principle when we approach the budget is we want to have a balanced budget. That means we want to have a balanced budget where the operating revenues, the ongoing revenues, equal the ongoing expenditures that are of an operating nature. revenues, equal the ongoing expenditures that are of, of an operating nature, so that those two balance. That's a real critical concept that we, that we adhere to. We want to make progress in this eighteen nineteen budget on the strategic priorities that I mentioned earlier when we were standing with the award. And identify opportunities to enhance those, to those, enhance service deliveries through the, through the use of technology and, and, and expanding our, our, our initiatives in being, having more of an open government so that our public can, can closely follow progress we're making in a lot of these initiatives. So this proposed budget maintains the existing high levels of service. It's largely a status quo budget. There's very small increases. It does provide for some minimal staffing changes that departments, mostly in the, in the area of efficiency, have brought forward as part of the budget team. We're adding capacity for our burgeoning technology demands. The town, as all of us face more and more technology that we, that we use in our daily work and our daily lives, the same goes at the town. The demands for our technology and the needs, especially in our public safety and in our public works department, increase, and we need to keep up with that. We also, I'm, I'm very happy to say, are making additional discretionary payments towards pension and OPEB. I know this was a real strategic priority for the town and the community, and very happy that this budget does, does make steps towards that goal. And we're investing in our equipment replacements fund, so that, that fund was, there was some resources were tapped for the Almond Grove. We're putting money back into that fund so that we can have good cash available to replace our equipment that we, we need for our operating departments. And of course, we'll have our Measure B projects as those are moved through the, move through and get developed. So as I mentioned earlier, you can see this chart lays out, I'm, I'm getting into our general fund checkbook, which is our primary fund. And what I like to point to everyone is the, you can see the general fund operating revenues. Those are ongoing revenues, as the manager mentioned. Those are things like property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy, our business license taxes, those ongoing revenues that we get every year. Those total in the budget for eighteen nineteen, forty-two point four million. And then what we do is we look at, okay, what are our ongoing expenses? And those are, if you see under general fund uses, the general fund operating expenditures, you can see that that amount is forty-one point seven. So looking at just of those two amounts, you can see that at the bottom line on our net sources, we have a seven hundred thousand dollar cushion between our ongoing revenues and our ongoing expenses. There are other uses of fun, of funds that we, we term as fund balance sources, and that you can see that that is the two point eight million of capital projects. And we also have three point one million of source, sources in our, that we expect to have, will have in our pension, general fund pension, OPEB reserve. Those monies will then be used for one-time use to accomplish our capital projects program, and also to be placed into our pension and OPEB trusts, so that we can make more progress towards our unfunded liability. But I want to point out that we, for our purposes, in terms of ongoing revenues, ongoing expenses, we have a balanced budget, and in fact, we have a small surplus. Looking at our next slide, this will graphically show as, you can see as of eighteen nineteen, you will see that the, the bar on the far right, it does dip down. And this is the use of those reserves for those identified purposes that I mentioned, the pension, the pension payments into the trust, and also the OPEB payments, along with the capital projects. So what I'd like to show, that you can see that that bar does go down, and that might cause some concern if you're looking at that saying, well, Steve, you said we had a balanced budget. What's happening? Why is our total fund decreasing? Well, the answer is that we'll be, that money will be coming out of our general fund reserves. And if I can get my slide to change, maybe I can get some help. It's not changing for me.
The last message that came up may have, yeah.
Okay. So you can see that, if you remember, that bar did go down, but what's happening is we are going to be enhancing on the, this is our, these are two main trusts that we discussed earlier this evening. We have a retiree medical trust, which is, we refer to as our OPEB trust. And we also have our pension trust, which is a newly formed trust this, this fiscal year, which is our IRS one fifteen. Right now, we have fourteen point five in our retiree medical trust, and we'll have, we have only three hundred thousand as of March thirty-first in our pension trust. But we expect that by June thirty of two thousand nineteen, when you saw that bar go down in this previous slide, we will have seventeen point two million dollars approximately set aside in retiree medical monies, and we will have four point seven million dollars in our PARs pension trust. Both of those amounts are significant, and they are both available to meet our needs as we, as we tackle the unfunded liability problem in the future. Keeping in mind that not only do we deal with the present, we also look to the future. And our five-year plan indicates that as we look going out forward, we have some issues that we have to incorporate into our five-year plan. The biggest challenge for us that we face is our rising pension contributions that we expect. CalPERS has made a number of efforts to address the unfunded liability across the state of California, and as a result of that, they've done things like lower the discount rate, they've lowered their amortization period. All of these things, which I think are a very wise thing to do, they do have a dollar, a dollar impact, and, and impact to the town. And in fact, and what that will mean is, though we will be making faster progress towards our unfunded liability, our contribution rates that we, as employer, must pay will go up. So you can see as we look out, we have very, very thin margins going out into the future. We will be exploring, as we get into each of these next scenarios, we need to be really thinking about how we can best address these, these very narrow margins in our operating revenues and operating expenses, so that we can still maintain the wonderful services the town has. And we're looking at various, various ideas, various efficiencies, things we can do to move forward to offer, to deliver our services at the most cost-effective level possible, but also looking at possible revenue enhancements, because it's going to be vital. As you can see, we do not have large surpluses. We, we, and this forecast does not, it is not a gloomy forecast. It doesn't have the, we expect that there may be a recession out in these years, and I'm just cautioning that these are based on our best estimates right now, which are rather conservative, but they do not forecast a, a major recession. So just wanted to get that out there. So the trends, what we did expect, we do still continue. We just met with the county. We expect increases, and we did expect increases in this, next year's budget and our ongoing revenues that are, ones that are important. And those were our property tax still is strong at the town, our transient occupancy tax has been trending very strong, our business license, along with the general economy nationwide, has been very strong, along with our franchise fees. We did project those out conservatively in those out years that I had just shown you in the, in the prior slide. And, but, so we expect that trend to continue, but at a moderate pace. And then we have, one downside is that, I think the town is very aware that we do have a decrease in our sales tax, and that largely comes from the business model at Netflix that has changed. And every year, the only sales tax that we get on is on those folks who have the physical DVDs in the mail. I am one still, one remaining customer myself, who still gets that to try to keep some revenue coming to the town. And, but if, if the more and more people drop out of that subscription package, then our revenue continues to decline, so we'll see some continued, continued declines in that area, and that's been built into our five-year forecast. And I'd like to now move over to the capital improvement program that we have before you tonight, or I can entertain any questions now that you may have. Matt Morley, our public works director.
So I get the pleasure of bringing the CIP to you, and have some great, great projects to bring forward this year. I wanted to talk about the development process for the CIP and what steps we sort of go through, high level, to get to the point we're at today. We start, as we did earlier in the year, looking at the council's core goals and strategic priorities. So you sort of give us the direction early on, and we use that information to start to formulate, year over year, where we're headed and what we should recommend for the capital program. We also incorporate our current and our scheduled projects, so this is, isn't something that is a snapshot of one year, but rather many years across our five-year CIP. So we continue the good work we have in progress to move those projects forward and move them towards completion. We match our projects to the priority, to, the, the priorities are matched to our available resources. So the, the big part of that is where are the funds available, and where is staffing, where are staffing resources to be able to deliver these projects? And very importantly, we bring this to the planning commission, and I, I think it's one of their favorite meetings of the year, being able to review the, the capital projects that we have coming forward, and really review and get into, into the intricacies of the projects, and I think they have a good time doing that. Really, the, the idea there is to get their approval from a CQAP perspective, but they, they do enjoy that, that participation. Quick overview on the funding. We have forty-eight million dollars in our five-year CIP, twenty-eight million in the next year's CIP, the eighteen nineteen CIP. And of that, about twenty million dollars are projects that span the fiscal years that are already in progress, that we're, so we're carrying forward the dollars to make those happen. And, and that brings a, a new funding of about eight point six million dollars into our CIP. Not all of this is town money. We use other people's money as well, so that's all folded into the conversation. From a source of funds perspective, we don't have a dedicated source of funds for our capital program, so we have to, we have to rely a lot on our, our general fund, and we do that through our general fund allocated reserve, which are leftover dollars from previous years that go towards our capital projects. And then you can see a number of other sources that get in there, and we're really focusing on the grants this year, and I'll have more conversation about that shortly. I've broken the presentation up this year into two areas. One is capital maintenance. Capital maintenance is important because it's taking a look at our current infrastructure and making sure that we're continuing to maintain that in a, in a good working order for, for the town. So this includes things like street pavement, including the Almond Grove, which is well underway, and it's currently headed into its second, second year of big projects. A big, big tax for us, a big taxing item for us recently has been curb ramps and sidewalks. So new, new laws have meant that whenever we do street maintenance, we have to put ADA curb ramps into place. That's increased the amount of money that we've had to spend on that element of our capital program in order to do the street maintenance. So that's been a, a big focus for us. We've included maintenance of our parks, so we have some creek trail and, and park pathway seal coating this year that will keep those pathways in good condition so that our residents can continue to use the, the open spaces that they, that they love. We've focused on some turf repair at the Town Plaza that will make sure that the events that we have going on at Town Plaza have a nice surface and, and the residents have a good surface to work on. And then in the library, we're beginning to see, as we hit about year seven, the need for capital maintenance at the library. And this is the first, the carpet tends to be a big wear item, especially in, with the, the heavy usage that we get at, at the library. So this is the first in what we will see, I imagine, over the next coming years as a growing list of needs at the library. And we have some HVAC or some air conditioning and heating needs at some of our buildings, especially the Los Gatos Sotoga Rec buildings that will be, we're asking to program for the next year. So to balance out the capital maintenance, we, we have capital improvements. This is the opportunity for the council to make changes in what we have in place in terms of infrastructure, and really to make some enhancements in the town. There's some, some neat projects in here, and really, this is an opportunity to do some, some impactful things. We've identified the Charter Oaks Trail, the Creek Trail along Charter Oaks as being a priority. We do have some dollars in the budget that are provided to us by FEMA to do some repairs to the trail. Those dollars can't be used for improvements, but rather for maintenance, so that's in the maintenance side. But we, we are asking to take a look at utilizing funds from the Albright project to do some improvements along there. We've had some requests from, from the residents in the area to do some improvements along there. So we'll, we're beginning to scope that project, and we're recommending that for two years out in the nineteen twenty budget cycle. We, as, as Town Manager Povetti noted, are looking at a downtown parking study to take that holistic look at the downtown, as well as the one-way street, downtown street pilot. And we are well underway on a lot, lots of work on our school busing pilot, and we're going to bring that to you on June fifth for an in-depth discussion, and really to dig in deep on that, to get an idea of where, where we're taking that, that program next. And then super important for the town is our emergency preparedness, taking a look at our EOC, our communication systems, our CERT teams, and where we need to, to be able to make that, those systems more robust, so that in the case of an emergency, we are actually prepared. Last year, the, the council provided for the addition of a staff member that was, is able to do transportation planning for us. So our, we have a, a new position, Ying Smith, who is here with us tonight, that has really taken this on in, in a big way and, and made some great strides for us. The key for us is to get to shovel-ready projects. So we want projects that we can bring forward to granting authorities that we, that we can say, these are ready to go. These are projects that we've done the preliminary, preliminary design on, and they're real, and we, we should definitely, they're definitely warrant bringing dollars to. So that's the key for us, is making sure that we can get that shovel-ready moniker on our projects. Sometimes that means the expenditure of town dollars to get there. There's very few people that, organizations that want to fund for planning grants. Where, where there are opportunities, we'll take advantage of it, of course, but sometimes we need those projects to have a little kickstart, so some, some of that is in our budget as well. There's other competitive measures that we have to face in our grants, so we are, we are, we are not a community of concern. So from a demographic perspective, we, we are challenged when there are points allocated for that, and we don't have a PDA, PDA, so that rules us out or helps us to lose some points right off, right out of the gate on some of the most competitive and larger of grants. So it makes, means that we really have our work cut out for us in order to, to, to achieve success. And speaking of success, I think we have some great steps that we've made. The Transportation Fund for Clean Air is a grant that we've been working on really hard lately, and it's got a really good story, as a couple of ours do. We, we are currently recommended for three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in funding through, by the VTA to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And we applied for another two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was on the, the list of not recommended, thanks to the good work of, of Mayor Rennie and a council member from Cupertino, who Cupertino is also in the same boat. There was a little extra light shed on our proposals and why our proposals were good. And in spite of not being recommended by the VTA, the, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District is currently relooking at those projects and having second thoughts about actually giving us money where maybe that may not have been identified previously. So great opportunities to really not give up on our money, or opportunities for money and to move those things forward. We've talked to you previously about the IDEA Grant and Innovative Deployments to Enhance Arturials, which is turned into our Smart Signals program. And so we're continuing to move forward with an MTC grant to bring that to fruition. And the other good story, or neat story in the, in the grant realm is for vehicle registration fees. And we had, we got, we were able to achieve that Smart Signals grant of seven hundred thousand dollars. We needed to provide a local match to go with that for our project. Thanks to the, to the, to the knowledge and the good work of Ying Smith, she was able to identify funds at VTA that were unspoken for, and simply by asking for them, get them appropriated to the town. So that was another three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that came our way. So good work and good efforts, and it shows, I think, that the, the decision to add that position and to really go after sort of the planning opportunities around transportation and mobility have really paid off for the town. So how have we set up our projects? We've set them up in several ways. One is the short-term projects, so we, 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 we want to be able to build something fairly soon. Right now, our big focus is on a project at Blossom Hill Road and Roberts Road East, right by Fisher Middle School, to do some real big enhancements around bicycle and pedestrian traffic, just because of the sheer number of students that are using that, that intersection on a daily basis. We hope to be able to build on that project in the next couple of years, so that would be a short-term capital project for us. In the medium term, we're looking at, we continue to, to carry our Creek Trail connector from Highway nine to the, to the Creek Trail on our, as a capital project. That is our sole, single-identified Measure B bike and ped project. So once Measure B comes to resolution, we'll have an opportunity to, to push forward and fund that project. We're continuing to work on the preliminary design there, so we can get to that shovel-ready stage and really make that one competitive. And then long-term projects are those visionary projects that are out there in the future that we have to start on at some point. So we're looking for grant opportunities and funding opportunities to move those forward. So this is where we're using some of those, those really scarce planning dollars, planning grant dollars, to move some of those forward. One of the projects identified in our bicycle and pedestrian master plan was a pedestrian crossing, enhanced pedestrian crossing at the Blossom Hill Road Bridge over seventeen area. So the, the project is still conceptual, but it looks like either its own bike and ped crossing or a widening of the Blossom Hill Road Bridge. And so that initial work is proposed in the budget for your consideration. So big, big numbers, one- So big numbers, $1.4 million in awarded projects, another million dollars in pending projects in our grant area. So big stuff coming forward yet. And this is all without having any of the Measure B dollars incorporated, so Measure B is still to come. And with that, that concludes the presentation on the capital improvement program.
And let me just wrap this up for you. As you've heard tonight, we've tried to align the proposed budget to the core goals and strategic priorities as identified by our Town Council. We are recommending that you consider both the operating as well as the capital improvement program tonight. Please join me in thanking all of the staff who have helped contribute to the preparation of the document. We are available to answer your questions. Depending upon the direction that you provide to us tonight, we will be coming back to you in early June with a resolution to adopt the budget. Thank you.
Okay. So we're ready for questions? I'll kick one off, I guess. I'd like to go back to the capital budget funding overview slide. So on this slide here, trying to understand this a little better. So the total CIP is 48 million. I'm trying to figure out how we get to 48 million, starting with the 28.4 for this year. You said 19.8 is carry forward, so all that 19.8 is part of the 28.4, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the 8.6 new funding is new funding that Los Gatos is going to provide, not including other sources? Is that correct?
It includes other sources.
It does include other sources. So how does 8 plus 28 get to 48?
Good evening. This is Githang Vary, Finance and Budget Manager. The proposed, the five-year plan is the 48 million, and the 28 million represents the carry-forward and fiscal year 18, 19 budget. So the additional four-year plan gets us to $48 million.
So the new funding, then, is only referring to the 18, 19 year and not what we get in future years?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
So all the rest of that comes from future years? Okay, great. Anybody else have a follow-up question on this one? Go ahead, Councilmember Sack.
I just need further clarification on this. So the budget that we're approving for this upcoming year's for the CIP is 28.4. Is that correct?
Yes, it's correct with the carry-forward items, yes.
But because we're looking at our five-year CIP, we've identified the total project cost to be 48 million, and we're hoping to carry forward 19.8?
So we are going to carry forward everything what was not spent, what was approved the previous year. And our best estimate right now, it's 18 million or 19, but it's when we close the fiscal year and pay all the bills, end of August, and close the year in October, we will determine that amount.
So then, the follow-up question I have is, assuming it's 18 million, what was not completed so that we have 18 million and carry forward?
So we carry forward a number of projects. One of the biggest, from a dollar perspective, is Almond Grove. So we have those dollars set aside, and they carry forward from year to year. Another big chunk of dollars in the $2 million range is our annual street maintenance project, which adds to it. And so there's a number of projects that are in process because our projects span the fiscal years. They tend to be multi-year projects that carry from one year to the next over time.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I may, on page A3 of your proposed capital budget, you'll see funding sources identified for the full five-year program by funding source, gas tax, G-FAR, et cetera. So that all adds up to 48 million. So while we're programming tonight for just the next fiscal year, we do want to look forward for the full five years, so that way you can be planning ahead in terms of those future investments, and we've made those funding source identifications for you.
Yeah, okay, I see them. They make sense on that page. That slide was a little confusing, a little disjointed when we threw the one item that was not this year and with all the other items that were. Go ahead, Councilmember Sack.
Okay, so to continue on the CIP, so in the past, we've stated a priority was to ensure that our, the PCIs of our streets, well, the goal is to eventually get to 70, but at least not to deteriorate further. So if you could just walk me through, with this budget, do we at least maintain a steady level? Do we gain some improvement, or are we going backwards?
Thank you, Lisa Peterson, Town Engineer. So as previously discussed last year, when we were having the budget discussion, we discussed that to maintain PCR, get to a PCI about 67, we needed to invest about $2 million per year. And in order to get to a PCI of 70, we would have to be investing about $3 million per year. So as you can see on page C8 regarding our street reconstruction resurfacing project, we are investing something above 2 million, but not 3 million. So we're going to be with this budget at about 68 to 69 is where we would end up hovering with this particular budget.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, so knowing 70 is a magical number to free up some flexibility with Measure B funds, what would be the additional cost to bring us up to 70?
So in general, it would have to be something that was ongoing. So it would really need to be, like I said, $3 million ongoing, but because we're under 3 million currently in this budget, I had actually looked at that particular question, and it would be something at about $700,000 a year additional that we would have to add.
Councilmember Specter, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I promised you questions, so I'll start them now. I was going to wait till after the people did their verbal communications, but since Ms. Sayak was talking about the specific issue, and I am looking at page C7 of our binder from the capital improvement part of it. So I'm just going to go through what my analysis was, or my math, and then see where I got it wrong, because I didn't come up with the same numbers that you did. You were looking at, you were looking at 2000, 2001 to 2007, eight. Those eight years as being good years with 11.7 million. And then, 2008, '09 to 2015, '16, those eight years as being bad years with 9.9 million. And so my math was that we would have 1.4 million in a good year, 1.2 million in a bad year. And then on C7, I read that as having 3 million this year. I added up all of the paragraphs, and I came up with 3 million. So I have two questions. My first question is, if the prior good year had an average of 1.4 and a bad year 1.2, and now we have three, why is that bad? And it must be that my math is wrong, so can you tell me where my math is wrong? Thank you.
So thank you. I think that there's, you know, a number of things that go into street maintenance as we're moving forward. I mean, one thing that, of course, we have to look at is that as we have gotten, you know, as we are at this point currently, that cost for street maintenance have gone up quite considerably. So we have a situation where now, and especially particularly in this economy, that we're paying quite a bit more even than we were, you know, just a few years ago for street maintenance. So of course, that does require us to increase the amount of money that we have to put into, you know, increase or keep our PCIs at a certain rate. Additionally, we have this other component of needing to have our ramps that need to be upgraded. So that's an additional cost that we have to incorporate into our street maintenance projects. So ultimately, what we do in order to make a determination of what type of ongoing funding that we need is we use our StreetSaver program. So this is a program that is something that MTC encourages everybody in the Bay Area to use, and we basically go ahead and input into that program the amount of dollars that we think that we have or we are going to have over a five-year period of time. And that program, then, will tell us what our PCI will be based on that numbers or those numbers that we are inputting. So, you know, ultimately, it is something that is based on the program. It is based on how our streets are degradating at the time. It's based on this regression curve that is within the program. So, you know, we do rely on the program ultimately to make a determination of what those types of investments would need to be for our streets.
Thank you. So when I hear you saying it's a methodology from StreetSaver, I understand, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that StreetSaver is one methodology, and you're looking at variables like the street selected arterial collector, resurfacing type, formula used. One, is that the type of variables that you're examining? And secondly, are there other methodologies that could be used?
So specifically, and actually for us to get our funding from MTC, we are required to use a pavement maintenance program, and specifically, they encourage everybody to use StreetSaver. I don't think there's anybody within the Bay Area that does not use the StreetSaver program. So it is something that is required for us to use that program in order to get our funding. So if we came up with another methodology, we would not necessarily get funding in order to maintain our streets.
And would it be possible for our purposes of our budgeting to give us, to give the council, to give the town the number that you need ahead of time or during the year? Because as I said, when I went through the page C7, my numbers did not correlate with the numbers that I was given from the staff.
If I could point you to page C8, and it's up on the screen as well, that actually identifies our annual allocation for street maintenance dollars. So on the upper source of funds part of that chart, in the 2018, 19 new funding column, you can see that we're adding $2.5 million in 18, 19 from all of the various sources combined. This does include a forecast of including some Measure B dollars, by the way, so there are some, we are assuming that Measure B will come through. And then if you skip over a column and look at the 1920, again, it's a $2.6 million and then slightly increasing across the years. So you can see what our numbers, our actual numbers that we're putting into street maintenance on an annual basis are right there.
Thank you, and I did see that. So would the answer to my question be, if we're looking to have the PCI of X under StreetSaver, these are the numbers that we would need for the streets?
These numbers are what we're proposing in the budget. If we wanted to go to a 70, we would need that extra $700,000 that Ms. Peterson talked about earlier.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Sack.
And I realize that there are people that are waiting for public comment, but I'm just kind of curious. So 700,000 is the difference between our surplus? And so I'm curious if there was any discussion of using that money? If there was discussion, what were some of the pros and cons? Because it does get us, it may get us to 70, but understanding that we'd lose that surplus. So if you could just illuminate?
And I think it's important to realize that the 700,000 we would need would be an ongoing commitment. So it's not a one-time allocation of 700 wouldn't necessarily get us to that 70. It's the ongoing commitment because as we're improving some streets, others are degrading, so in order to keep up with it, it needs to be a regular infusion of dollars. And given the five-year forecast where there are zero years and smaller year surpluses, we felt it prudent to carry forward the budget that we have presented to you here, knowing that it puts us at some disadvantage in terms of the latitude we get with Measure B dollars in the future.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you. Following up on that, because I know that the budgeting is a priority issue, and you were talking about, I think you said that we have $19 million that we're carrying forward, something like that. Was thought given by, was thought given to the, using, trading some of that, the items that are being carried forward for that 19 million, and let's exclude Almond Grove, taking some of that monies that we're taking forward and transferring them to the street program, using 700,000 of what we have in reserve?
When we bring the proposed CIP to you, we try to achieve a balance across all of our projects and all of our infrastructure. So this year, we brought forward a number of things around emergency preparedness. We brought forward small additions to our curb ramp upgrades because we know we need to do those in order to make the streets happen. We've included a few dollars for bike and ped projects because we know we need to launch those so that we are shovel-ready for the future. So we tried to achieve a balance across all of the town's needs, focusing a lot on the discussions that the council had earlier in the priority setting session, and making sure that we take care of our existing infrastructure and also allow for those improvements.
And we appreciate that the council is, you know, having to deal with that same balancing act. How do we meet multiple objectives? I think what we're trying to do is demonstrate that we are intending to make forward progress on meeting our PCI. If we get up to 68, 69, that's good, and if we can maintain an ongoing commitment of at least 2.5 million a year, that's great. If we're successful with some future revenue enhancements, that might give us a little bit more cushion for next year as we think about our streets and what our ongoing abilities might be. But you do have page A8 in your binder, so if you are interested in looking at that trade-off discussion between all of our CIP programs, that is available for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay. So I haven't been rushing to bring the public in because I'm assuming they would like to hear us ask questions first, and then with their short three minutes, they can ask about what we, or mention what we haven't asked. So unless they're rushing forward, I'm going to keep asking questions at this point. I think they're happy with that, and I think it's a better process since there's so many things people could mention in their three minutes, maybe we will cover some of them if the other, unless the other council members are uncomfortable doing it that way. I'm going to ask my next question. If you could go to, in the regular operating budget, page A13 is basically a more detail of how we got to a surplus of .7 million for the year. I had a couple questions on that. The first one, I guess, is in the revenues column, the very last item where you've separated out what came out of reserves, you said use of reserves .5. Well, which kind of reserves were these? Because above it, you mentioned capital reserve, and then you have pension OPEB reserve, and then you have use of reserve. So what reserves would those be? This is page A13.
So that reserve is use of the capital and special reserve. It's one reserve on our general fund. The reason we separated out, just to explain that the 2.3 million goes into the capital program, and $500,000 goes to the internal service fund. So just we separated out just to be able to explain more detail the use of those.
That is the repayment to the equipment replacement fund. The money was borrowed from the reserve for the Almond Grove project, so we're paying the, restoring our fund to help our PCI, go back to our infrastructure.
But you have it going forward .4 all years also. Same thing, you're just assuming there would be payments into various funds of that amount?
Restoring those monies that were taken from the various internal service funds to accomplish Almond Grove, so we're having a sort of a payback over time.
In addition, just clarifying that we have, we also plan prefunding the additional funding to the parks. And the first year, we funded that $390,000 out from the operating expenditures, but the out-years, we just used some funding, some reserves, some anticipated savings in the forecast. the forecast. So that the out-years, the 1920, out to 23, 24, that you referred to, 0.4 percent, 0.1 million is going to the pension trust.
Okay, so it's going to the pension trust coming from?
From anticipated year-end savings.
Okay. So if I could follow along, kind of a question, down in the expenditure side, there's what to me seems like a little bit of a disconnect. On page A9, when you're talking about the general fund reserves and where money are coming from, you say, okay, there's 2.4 coming out of, for, going out to CIP, and then you say there's 4.3 million going out to the IRS 115 pension. But then when I go back to page A13, I have trouble getting to the number 4.3. I see 3.1 for the OPEB transfer to PARS, and I see a .4 prefunding to PARS. So that only adds up to 3.5. How do I get to the rest of 4.3? So that, for council members that missed it, so I was asking a question about A9, near the top, that sort of the first, end of the first big paragraph, it mentions 4.3, and then I'm trying to find it in the detail of the chart on A13.
I'm sorry, it said the 4.3 million is the scheduled payment for the IRS Pension Trust Fund, including the current fiscal year scheduled payment of 1.2 million, and the next year for the 3.1 million.
We're making 1.2 this fiscal year.
This fiscal year, it's for the two fiscal years.
Paying 300,000, we have four months of this fiscal year, approximately 400,000 per month. March, April, May, and June would be 1.2. Adding that on to your 3.1 would get you, if my math is correct, somewhere near that number.
Okay, I'm absorbing that.
Yeah, so the forecast that you're looking at is the 18, 19 amounts only. But we, I think we're just trying to point out that after we make the 3.1 with the 1.9 we're doing this fiscal year, we'll have a total of that total amount.
Okay.
Moved into the PARS Pension Trust, which is a very positive thing from my perspective.
Okay, I guess that makes sense because in that paragraph, you talked about what happened in 16, 17, and what happened in 17, 18, what happened in 18, 19, and then I guess those two, you tossed them together and confused me.
We didn't mean to.
Okay. Thank you. And one more thing related. So in page A13, again, you're talking about pension prefunding the PARS of .4. So that's what we recently voted to add that. Before that, we had talked about putting .3 in, I think to OPEB it was, but where do I find the .3 on page A13?
The .3, 100,000 is per our reserve policy. That will come from year-end savings, so that's not specifically budgeted, whereas the PARS payment was budgeted, but the 300,000 is additional. So if all goes well, we'll have a total of $700,000 set aside in the pension trust. If we have, if we have, if, you know, there's a, we call it a waterfall in our reserve policy. But if, when we go to close the books for 17, 18, we hope to have 300,000 available from this year's savings, actual savings. That will be now available to put in the reserve and sent to PARS as part of the pension, plus the budget. We also have committed, disciplined ourselves to actually budget 400,000 additional monies that we've carved into the operating budget and made a commitment to.
So just to be clear, there's, we're saying there's, we're budgeting 700,000 surplus?
We're not, we're budgeting 400,000, but we hope to have 300,000 available that we would bring forward as a mid-year budget adjustment. Once we know our actuals for 17, 18, and we'll say, according to our reserve policy, we can now place another $300,000 in the pension trust reserve.
So you're saying that the 300,000 is part of the .7 that is at the bottom of the column?
Yes, this is correct, from the surplus, yes.
So in other words, you're expecting to take that 3 from the .7?
We would be doing that next fiscal year, but we also hope we have 300,000 this fiscal year. That's not shown, and we, if we had a 17, 18 column, there's hopefully a surplus at the bottom line for this fiscal year that will, that 300,000 of those monies will also go into the pension trust.
Okay. So because it's not really part of our budgeting, it's something we, council members have to remember?
It's in the reserve policy.
In the future to, you know, because in my mind, I'm like, okay, we're putting in .4, and we're also putting in .3, but we're not really putting in the .3 unless we agree to do it later on.
It's actually required in our reserve policy, so it's not discretionary. We have a, we've laid out very specifically, we have to establish our reserves at the required levels. Any excess would then go, there's a $300,000 commitment that's in the council-approved reserve policy that would then be used to be, to add. So that's not something that we'll forget. It's something we follow, very strict steps when we close the books.
Okay, because when I read this, I assumed, okay, well, if we do nothing, .7 is going to go into our CIP, into our GFR, but that's not actually true. We're going to subtract 300,000 from that, and only 400,000 will go into our GFR if we don't spend it anywhere else in between.
That is correct. However, I'd like to always mention that we're pretty conservative with our five-year plan. We always tend to, I don't want to say that we will forever, but we always tend to beat this number in terms of our savings.
Okay.
Hopefully, we will continue that trend.
I'm going to give other council members a chance to ask more questions, maybe in this area if they want to. Councilmember Jensen.
It's not this area, it's very general. Is that okay?
Sure.
Throughout our budget, the general budget document, there are phrases included in the accounts of various departments, says blah, 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 salaries, pension, medical, et cetera, account for this much. However, we are not budgeting any kind of increase of salaries because we are now going through negotiations. My question is, how do we account for the potential negotiated salary increases if we're not including it in this budget?
Since we are in negotiations, we didn't want to tie the hands of the council or predetermine what that outcome would be, so that's why we did not anticipate what a particular cost of living increase might be or other items that might be subject to negotiation at the table. As you can see, we do have some anticipated surplus. So once we do know what those contracts are going to say, we anticipate that we will be living within our means and be able to meet that. So that's why, you know, we look at the five-year forecast together at the table to make sure that everyone understands what those assumptions are moving forward. And as you know, there's a lot of other competing needs for those dollars, whether it's making up that extra 300,000 for pensions, doing more for PCIs, et cetera. So it is a balancing act, and when we bring back those contracts for final approval, we'll be able to discuss those budget details with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Would anybody else wish to ask questions at this time? If not, I, feel free, otherwise I'll invite the public.
I'll listen to the public.
Okay. So I don't have any cards here. Does, the clerk has one card over there, I see? No, no cards? Looking for volunteers? Weren't ready yet? You can fill out a card later on. Catherine Summers?
Good evening, Council. Catherine Summers, Lesgattas Chamber of Commerce. So I didn't really know that you had to deal with all of this, so I am definitely in awe of all that you have to look at in this budget. And in fact, my miniscule dollars really aren't going to make a bit of difference here. But I did want to bring, in fact, Director Conway just enlightened me to something when he showed the one slide that showed transit occupancy tax is going up, sales revenue, sales tax revenue is going down. I think there's a direct correlation there, and this was not actually my planned speech, but I think there's a direct correlation there of the money that we collect from the TOT should be reinvested into community vitality, economic vitality, in order to increase that sales tax. I disagree, and I don't think that we can blame Netflix anymore for that loss of sales tax revenue. I think it is up to us to figure out how to make the downtown and all of our commercial districts more vital, and I think we will see that sales tax revenue increase. I'm really pleased to see some of the new businesses that are going in downtown, and I think that has due a lot to the work that Monica's been doing and to the work that the Chamber of Commerce has been doing, and that there is a new sense of, you know, something is happening in town. On that note, I do appreciate that you will look at the Chamber of Commerce as being your information and information center and visitors bureau, and I hope that you will continue to support us in our scope of services for that. So you'll be looking at that in the next couple of days or possibly tonight. I do want to ask for a little bit more money. We, a couple months ago, the council tasked the Chamber of Commerce with coming up with an idea for the summer for some events in the summer, and so we have come up with the idea of having these summer block parties. You had at that time decided that you would have a special event grant that you would offer, and I'm happy to say that I think we are receiving a little bit of that money. We're not receiving as much as we had hoped, and in order to put on those events at the caliber that I think that they should be put on so that they will be well-received and memorable and bring some of that vitality to downtown, I am hoping that you will consider possibly subsidizing that grant for the Chamber of Commerce so that I can do it, so that I can really fulfill that responsibility. I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Ms. Summers? Doesn't look like it, thank you very much. Would anybody else wish to talk to us on this agenda item? Looks like we have another reluctant volunteer. Mr. Jack Vanada?
Thank you. What we've kind of discovered over a long period of time is that the questions we ask basically don't get addressed. And so we made the determination, the only people that really have any kind of influence are council members. So we took a look at the budget and put a lot of effort into shortening the number of questions, trying to make them as direct and as accurate as we possibly can, and then asked what we thought were poignant questions, a different way of looking at the budget. So all of our questions have really, and questions and comments have been given to the council, and I asked all the council members if they had any questions, I would be glad to answer them. There were no questions, so they have all the information that we put in. So I have nothing else.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Vanada? I think you have one, Mr. Vanada, Vice Mayor Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Mr. Vanada, we received some correspondence from you, and it's quite extensive. Are you, at this point in time, saying that you are not satisfied with the response you've received from staff or lack thereof, your questions were not answered?
Well, they haven't been answered yet. The session isn't over, but everybody has the comments and the questions. And as I mentioned, the only people who really have influence are council members, and anything that we say is in the hands of the council members, and we asked them if you have any questions on all the statements that we made. There were no questions, so I assumed they knew what the answers were, and they could ask those questions if they were questions to the council members. They were certainly questions to us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanada. Looks like nobody else is interested, so we'll close the public testimony and come back for more questions. Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the people who sent in the information. It was very detailed and very extensive. I appreciate it. As for myself, the issues that I have with the budget are not with the line items that have been presented to us or whether they add up and so forth. It's more general because Ms. Pravetti said that the budget is prudent, and it most likely is. But what I was looking for was, do we have any pots of money that could contribute, further contribute to our unfunded liabilities? Because yes, we have a budget that probably balances and uses, you know, money that we are taking in on various, from various sources, but that doesn't, that ignores the fact that our unfunded liabilities are 50 to 70 million. We're paying them off over time. The problem with that is the payment over time is in effect costing the town 7, 7.5% interest. In the meantime, the monies that we're paying those, that width, that debt width, is getting about 1 and 1.5% interest. So I see that as a major issue, and everything I look at, I have to tell you, you're right. We have hundreds of pages of type and numbers that are about like the smallest font that you could possibly have, and what we do or are expected to do is go through this. And in going through that, what I would, the vision that I was taking to it, is there any pot of money for that we could take all or part and increase our payments of our unfunded liabilities? Because I think these are, this is a critical issue for us today, and even more so for those of us who will be living in this town or working in this town in the years to come. So with that in mind, that was the reason I asked the question about the capital improvement program, because we carry forward, we, the town, carry forward, for example, something like $19 million that's coming forward to our capital improvement project. Could we be using that money better? Could we be using that money for our unfunded liabilities? What I hear from staff is the answer is no. Question. We have 72 million, I think, this is right, and I want to thank staff, especially Mr. Conway, for answering some of my questions a few days ago. I think we have 72 million in treasures fund balance. Does that all have to stay there? Could we be taking some of that money, which is earning 1, 1.5%, and using it to pay down our unfunded liabilities? So I'll start with that question.
Thank you, Councilmember Specter, and that's a very good question, and I think it's been actually raised by the community as well. And looking at it big picture, we do have approximately, I think our investment report mentions, we have 74 million, $74 million in our town treasury, and that is held in those various checkbooks I mentioned, I mentioned to you earlier in the evening. For instance, X million of that is in our capital projects fund, which includes all the carryover numbers that you're talking about. X number of that is in a gas tax funds, which are limited for street use. Approximately 10 million of that is kept in internal service funds, and we go down the line. And so, and the short answer to your question is, all of the checkbooks that we have and all the monies that total up to that 74 million are specifically designated for particular uses. If I go to the internal service funds, for example, we have $10 million of cash in our treasury for that. But those, that $10 million is broken up into pots of checkbooks. One is for workers' comp, one is to pay our general liability claims, one is to help, we have about 500,000 in our facilities, so if we have a roof repair that we need to do or an HVAC system that goes out, that money is set aside for that. So we have, in each of our checkbooks, we have money set aside that's invested at the 1 to 1.5%, but we have calls on most of this money. The area that we could theoretically free up, well, one, two major areas. One is the capital projects, carry for it, as you mentioned, if we were to reprioritize that in some fashion. The other area is our general fund reserves. We have approximately $10 million in our budget reserves for catastrophic and budget stabilization. Why hesitate to say that that's a good place to go? 10 of that 74 million is in that, those two reserves. That's our rainy day money, that's... That's the money that we have set aside very consciously in our reserve policy. That amount equals 25% of the 1819 budget in our general fund. So when we, when we tried to get a benchmark about, well, where's, where are some target targets of opportunity? When you look at the GFOA, which is a Government Finance Office Association, their recommendation, and this is a nationwide minimum threshold, is that they recommend that cities, as there is no hard and fast rule, but they do recommend that the cities establish these general fund reserves to equal three months of operating budget, to not, to carry you through three months of operations. Do you have sufficient reserves? So if you looked at our 25% level, you divided our operating budget in 1819, you would discover that the $10 million we have in those two reserves is equivalent to three months of our operating budget. So it's right at the, it's right, it's right at the target. So if we were to lower that level from 25% to 20, we'd be below target, so we'd be taking a risk, and it wouldn't be a best practice. The cities that I know of personally that have lower thresholds than 25%, and there are cities that do, are there because they don't have the resources to have higher levels. We've been very, I think we, as an organization, as a town, have been very cautious, and we've maintained our reserves. We have comments and moody's, you know, we had some community feedback on that, but we've had comments that we have a strong cash position, and, you know, cash is always good. You know, you can't say, you don't want to, cash is king, as there's a saying in the finance world, but cash is good. I do agree, though, that it's, it is, it is frustrating to, you know, to earn the current interest environment that we're in is at 1.26, and when we have a 7% pers issue, that is, that is an issue. But, you know, I think as we look at each of those various pots of money, and we have looked at those very closely, we don't really have money that we have that I'd say that would be in a, what I would call a slush fund category, other than these $10 million that we feel as best practice have been committed and set aside for, you know, for that rainy day or for that earthquake or for that economic event that may hit us. So I hope I've answered your question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and anytime you want to cut me off, you're the guy to do it. Yes, you answered my question, thank you. You also were referring in your answer, I believe, to Mr. Keon's letter to us, where he, to us being staff and council, where he suggested that the 3.1 million that we were going to contribute to the unfunded liabilities could be raised by 6.9 million to 10 million. I think I hear you saying indirectly that you don't agree with that analysis, but just let me ask you, do you agree or not agree that we could bring it up to 10 million with an additional 6.9?
In a, in a perfect world, I agree with Mr. Keen. If we had a reserve that was in excess of the bare, the minimum reserves we have now, I would, I would wholeheartedly recommend that we, you know, we would make financial sense to address our unfunded and, and keep, keep plugging away and reducing that cost. That makes perfect sense, and I don't disagree with it. It's sound advice. But I think what I, what I say from a technical perspective is, we don't have, in order to get that 6.9 million, we would have to take it from one of our checkbooks where we have commitments or obligations or have set aside specific amounts for specific council priorities and initiatives. So what, we would have to raid one of those set asides, and in order to do that. So had, had we had excess funds beyond what we have now, I think it would make perfect sense. So I hope I'm answering you that I don't disagree with that recommendation, but until we get to a point, and let's say we had a fiscal year where we had revenues come in much stronger, we would have reserves above and beyond the 25% level, and that would be a perfect opportunity to keep, to keep attacking this unfunded. There are opportunities in the future, so I don't disagree with it.
I think Mr. Andrews would like to add to that.
I would. I would just like to add a few comments to the beginning question. If we could go back to the PowerPoint presentation, staff had some additional slides that we thought might be useful, depending on where conversations went, and there's a slide called Reduced Amortizations. So, so what, what Mr. Keen is talking about and what we were just discussing is kind of the concept of prepaying your mortgage, like seeing if you can find other residual monies. Earlier, the town manager talked about the fact that we have to run our budget similar to a household, and the reality is, we just don't have large lump sum amount of money right now. Now, council in previous budget years has already done a considerable amount of lump sum payments. We're going to have approaching 4.5 million in the PARs 115 trust account, which are monies in addition to the monies that go on an annual basis to pay our ARC, which the town has paid their annual required contribution every year. And while we're looking at what appears to be large numbers from a budget perspective, so maybe the 400,000 that this council committed to in additional payments doesn't seem like a lot, what it does over the course of time is achieve a similar result to what Mr. Keen is talking about. It's not an exact amount. If we had more money now, we would definitely get more time value of money and get additional interest savings, but the 400,000 that we've already agreed to commit is done, and the council adopted it, to get us from a 30-year amortization to a 20, which is still going to see significant savings for the town. Estimates of the strategy that the council adopted are going to be savings in the vicinity of 10 million or higher. And so, right now, from a budgetary perspective, we have the ability to do the incremental payments of 400,000. In previous years, this council has had the foresight and the budgetary ability to do lump sum payments, which now reside in the PARs 115 trust and will be in the vicinity of about four and a half million by the end of the year, and the 14.5 million in the OPEB trust, where we started from the very beginning there. And whenever we have a conversation about unfunded liabilities, sorry, give me one second. I always, I always think it's important to understand that the unfunded actuarial liability is a byproduct of an equation, and that equation is the actuarial liability, which is calculated every year, minus the market value of assets, ultimately gets us to what, in our case, is an unfunded liability. But if you look at the whole equation, you realize, we have somewhere in the vicinity of $130 million in assets. This is not a problem where we're starting at zero, and we have this massive deficit that we have to somehow figure out how to manage our way out of. What we have is a 30-year equation. Every year, we revalue that equation, and in 2016, that equation said, we have an actuarial liability of X. We have assets already, significant assets, of Y. However, X minus Y brings us to an unfunded liability, and the council members correct, totals currently are about 51 million in an actuarial liability. And I always think it's important to stress the concept of actuarial. This is a science with a multitude of variables that then has a significant component of artistry, as opposed to just clear science. And so every year, we revalue this. Currently, the valuation in 2016 says that X minus Y does mean that we have a deficit. And if you go and look at the funding, you can see, you know, through poor investment returns and CalPERS lowering their discount rate, our funding ratio has declined along with those variables changing, which CalPERS is very prudent in changing those variables. If we don't think we're going to be able to earn a return of seven and a half percent or eight percent, then we should lower that. That's a very prudent thing to do. We, as a town, are recognizing, and this council recognized, that moving from a 30-year amortization to a 20 is a very prudent thing to do. CalPERS is doing that also. But all those changes in variables end up being negatives. And if you look at the OPEB equation, you can see there, our funding is escalating dramatically because of the actions this council took, starting in 2009. The fact that you had the foresight to move away from strictly a Pago to actually paying an ARC in OPEB, which is, this last valuation is 2015. The preliminary 2017 valuation, which is still in a draft form, is probably going to show our funded ratio there somewhere in the vicinity of 50%. So I, I just think whenever we talk about actuarial things, it's important, you know, to remind folks, there's a lot of pieces to the equations. There's not just an unfunded liability. Thank you.
Councilmember Saak.
Okay, so I'm also going to look at the reserves, and I appreciate the explanation on the budget and catastrophic. So if you could, I'm looking at page 89 as well, and so the other, I'm looking at all the other reserves that are assigned, open space, sustainability, and goes all the way down to other. So 3.6 for the, for the estimated. If I go to the next page, it explains that other reserves are, have, are smaller reserves that have been classified as other. So am I to assume that everything above that is lumped into the 3.6?
See, estimated on 630 of 18 she's talking about.
Right. So it could either be the estimated or the proposed, but I'm looking at the other reserves on the bottom of the chart on 8.9.
I'm sorry. So the other reserve at the year and as, before we close the fiscal year, the current fiscal year, 1718, we cannot determine how the, if we have any surpluses or any extra revenue, how it's going to be determined. So we keep the existing levels in the different pot, which is committed and assigned and what we use, and we will, when we report back with the CAFR in December, we will establish all of those, the money will be directed to the appropriate spot. So right now, the others is just in and out during the year for the, for the 17, 18 years and 1819. So we won't be determining those reserves until we close the fiscal year. In the, according to the reserve policy, if we have a surplus, 300,000 will go automatically to the pension and OPEB reserves, so our OPEB reserve will grow 300,000, because, but we cannot assume that until we close the fiscal year.
Go ahead.
Okay, so if you can just walk me through this, I'm going to take it step by step. So let's take this budget. We make, we make some approvals, and we'll say, for example, let's just say, I, we are going to add 500,000 more to the open space reserve for next year, and then we're going to add some to the sustainability. Wouldn't by the council action and approval of a budget, we then assign it to these different reserves?
Yes, it's correct. Just as it reflects in the end of the six, 2018 fiscal year, everything that reflected in the estimated June 30th, 2018 year-end balance, it reflects the current budget that was approved last year. So we took consideration that we are going to use up the budget strategy reserve, the almond group savings will be used this fiscal year for capital spending and additional payment for the pension trust. So this action, the budget action, we are proposing transferring out 2.8 million from the reserves, 2.3 million for capital projects, and 5 million, 500,000 for internal service funds, and this coming out for the, from the capital and special project reserve, and you can see that the 7.8 million that is estimated at fiscal year 1718 get decreased to 5.9 million.
Okay, so then again, then, I'm still confused, then what action did the council take to put 3.6 in the other reserve?
The, the council didn't take any actions. Those are just the residual money that we just estimate, the revenues and expenditures, and it has to, it's, the other reserve is just a placeholder until we close the fiscal year, and maybe the finance director would like to add to it.
Yes. That, Councilmember Saak, that 3,670 is really our anticipated total year-end savings and other reserve, as other reserves are no longer needed. For instance, get to mention the, the strategic budget reserve, it wasn't all used. So we, we basically think of that amount as a parking spot. When we do our year-end close, then we'll know exactly what that number will be. Right now, that's an estimate. Let's say that number is three, three and a half million dollars. Then, based on our waterfall, which is your approved reserve policy, X will go into the, first of all, you know, we'll establish the amounts we need for the operating budget, which is the 5,037. Those are, you see that in the following year. That's our, that's 25% of our operating budget. And then we, well, the reserve policy takes us step by step, and then we'll say, there's 300,000 available to go into the pension trust, et cetera, down the line, and then all, under our current reserve policy, anything that's left over in that, in that 3,670 will go to the capital improvement reserve, which then can be reprogrammed, and I didn't have a chance to pipe in, but that will be additional money that will go into the general fund capital improvements reserve, which may help us augment our next CIP and increase those funding levels, because we'll have more money in the CIP reserve, because what we do in the current CIP is we only forecast out in those next four years beyond the year one, the actual money in the reserve. So we kind of play a catch-up game. So we have money in a parking spot, it's going to go in its proper reserve once we have actuals, but we have to have our actuals first.
And so, in many, okay, so this parking lot of 3.6?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to see if I can catch up here. Okay, so everything that's committed, that was by council policy. So, for example, budget catastrophic, there was a policy set that 25% split into, and that's that.
It's in our reserve policy, correct.
Assigned is, what kind of action puts something in an assigned checkbook?
Assigned, assigned reserves or amounts committed or assigned in the, in that, in that category are done by intention of council, but they didn't necessarily have a legal resolution or an ordinance or an adoption. It has less formal, but in the case of you, you're mentioning the open space reserve, the open space reserve is a reserve that we have as a residual. It was established, I think, around 20 years ago, when there was some sale of mid pen open space parcel, or, and the council's intention, and they had said in the budget, our intention is to use this money for open space, and there's, we have a file and a history of that, but it wasn't done with a formal resolution, it wasn't done with a formal ordinance. So we had to, in order to get these categories, we have to go and explain to our independent auditor, okay, why work, why do we consider this an assigned amount? And these did fit that criteria.
Okay. So since we're talking parking lots, if we can do a future parking lot of assignments and intention, I think what we're learning is intention versus action is two different things, so perhaps a policy committee can look at that. And then, and so I'm just trying to understand, and then this 3.6, it wasn't necessarily assigned to an other reserve, but it's just extra money that you may or may not have based on the audit.
Correct. Based on year-end, we're still in the middle of fiscal year 1718, so we don't know how our, our actual savings.
So when we are at our midterm, whatever that savings would be is the amount that we would then be reexamining.
Our reserve policy would, would then say, okay, if that number happens to be three, it just, let's just say it ends up being exactly what we estimate there, then our reserve policy will say, you now have 300, 3,670,000 in a, in a holding pattern. When we do the CAFR, the auditor will say, okay, under your reserve policy, where is that 3 million, what, what home is that 3 million going to be divvied up into? And that's when we do that, and we'll do it according to the council-approved reserve policy. So most of that, most of that would probably end up in the capital improvements reserve.
And as you remember, a couple of years ago, we had a considerable surplus, and so when we did our strategic priorities, we actually used the opportunity as kind of a budgeting exercise about, should we reprogram what we put into GFAR to other purposes? Council at the time said, oh, actually, we have additional capital projects, so a lot of it stayed in GFAR, but through priority setting, you were able to program that and identify how you wanted that to be spent in 1718. And so I, I think from a budgeting standpoint, we don't want to budget to every single penny. We need to have a little bit of cushion, because sometimes expenses exceed what we anticipate, sometimes revenues come in a little bit higher, so we need a placeholder just to give us a little bit of cushion, but through our budget actions throughout the year, you know, you'll have a chance to reexamine. to reexamine, okay, we're following our general fund policy. We've distributed to pensions. We'd like to distribute to GFR perhaps for PCIs or other purposes. But then if we're very lucky, you know, there may be other priorities. And then you, we would by resolution essentially move some of that money out of GFR for whatever other council priorities there may be. But we again want to be conservative and not budget to the penny because if we're not, if it doesn't come true for one reason or another, then we're going to be trying to make up for some challenges.
Go ahead.
Okay, so then, and I appreciate that logic. Thank you for walking me through that. So then, does it then make sense to reexamine our investment strategy? So when we look at that waterfall, if we would like an aggressive pay down, we look at how that waterfall is so that instead of it all going to capital improvement, there's us more allocation towards okay.
Sure. So, you know, we do consider our general fund reserve policy. Every year, we bring it to our finance committee to get the community's input. And then we bring it to you for final adoption. This is something that, again, depending upon our budget forecast, if it's looking like we could actually satisfy higher expectations in terms of additional pension payments, then it certainly would be the discretion of the council to increase the four hundred to maybe five hundred and then have an additional waterfall for something else. But again, because we don't have dedicated revenue for capital, you know, we want to make sure that we are continuing to invest in our quality infrastructure that makes our town so special. And we recognize that we do have a backlog of projects which in some ways could be considered another form of liability. So we're trying to balance the governance of the entire town as well as the current priorities.
And my last question, remind me again when you close the books. What, what's the timeline? I get confused with all the different dates.
We, we are in the process of closing our books through, I would say, the end of September. The reason why it takes that long is we still get invoices dating back to June through August. We have contractors that do work in June, on June twentieth, and they send us an invoice in the middle of July. And some are even later than that, going into the middle of August. So the auditors and we require ourselves to charge it back to the prior year when, excuse me, when the actual work was performed. So by the end of September, we have the books closed. And we usually report out on our first quarter budget report, which is in October, we say how we, how we, preliminarily, how we ended the fiscal year and what our savings were in the general fund. Yeah.
So if I could ask some more questions about the, the other, I'm not sure I can, I got your philosophy of needing to park it, but I'm, so if I look at the, the, you know, the nineteen, but four point four eight six, I'm still, it's got a, it has to have come from somewhere. And the ones that are going down is the pension, OPEB reserve is go, you know, you're losing three million there. Is that money ending up in the other holding, for example?
No, I think it's helpful to look at, look at your, at six thirty two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, you can see that the total general fund reserves actually decreased from twenty-six million to twenty point eight million. The reason is, if you remember, I had those bar charts and I said, look at our fund balances going down. That's because we are sending money to the PARS pension trust next fiscal year and also making capital improvement transfers to the GFR fund so the capital program can get done. But what we're saying is when we look at the twenty million dollars that we have in the budget for eighteen nineteen at year-end, that's our year-end balance we forecast, we know that we have to have five million oh three seven, five, for, in our budget stabilization, and five million oh three seven in our catastrophic. And these other amounts are assigned, so they were set aside and specifically set aside in our reserve policy. What we're saying is we're going to now have twenty million dollars, of which four point four million will have to be reassigned according to the reserve policy, either going, it's either going to go back up into that capital reserve. But it's one of the nuances that we have to deal with, with our auditor, in that we can't put money into reserves unless we actually have the money and it's been verified. So we pretty much have a, kind of a parking spot, for lack of a better word, until we have actual hard dollar numbers. Then every, every, that money goes and finds a home according to our reserve policy. It's not something that we have any discretion, staff just says, okay, we have a reserve policy. We now have twenty million dollars and it needs to go into one of these various committed categories. Or council at mid-year next year could say, we would like to have a committed amount set aside for additional pension dollars. And we would then say, fine, the reserve policy would reflect that. It would, we'd bring forward a change in the reserve policy. And when we go to close the books next year, we would probably look at this four point four million and say, now we have a million dollars, we'll put in the pension reserve, additional pension reserve.
So let me try again. So is, is part of this four point four and change, big change, carry forward projects that probably won't finish?
No, these are not carry forward dollars. These are just general fund dollars that are fund balances in the general fund that haven't been set officially in a reserve as required by our reserve policy. And it's, it's just a nuance of the fact that we have to have actual numbers. And so one of the things that gets a little confusing for all, for all of us is this three million six seventy in seventeen eighteen is there because we don't know our actual savings this year. When we get the hard and fast numbers, I mentioned to council member Sayak, we'll know what that number is. And then it will go in one of these, it will go into one, and as of eighteen, it will go into one of the above categories according to our reserve policy, most likely. The bulk of it will go into the capital reserve. And then we'll have numbers next year where those will, that, that, there won't be a part, when we close the CAFR for eighteen, that, that other category will be very minimal. It won't, it will be put in its place, put in its proper spot according to the reserve policy. That amount will be finalized. And then eighteen nineteen will be finalized next summer or next fall after eighteen nineteen completes.
I think what's, what's difficult is we didn't have three point six million extra dollars that, it was all programmed somewhere, or most of it was programmed somewhere. And you're saying we can't, even though we programmed it, we can't put it in those places?
We, it's, it's, it's saying that based on our current year revenues and current year estimated expenses, we have these amounts that are established as reserves for the four point nine, four point nine, three point one of pension. Those amounts are, are, are set aside and specifically set aside in an exact dollar amount. But what it's saying is until we do final numbers, and, and, and this is just something the auditors have really, have really stressed with us, we don't put it into one of the categories yet until we know exactly what the number is. And so it sits in a holding pattern. It's waiting for a home. It's an orphan. And it needs to find, under our reserve policy, that money will find its way home and likely the, the largest part of the herd hopefully will end up in the capital improvement program, reserve.
And I just want to stress that again, council has the discretion to modify that reserve policy. So if we do have a healthy balance and you want to redistribute how that money gets spent and allocated to the different reserves, you will have that discretion. We just can't do that tonight. But you will be able to later on in the fiscal year, December would be the earliest opportunity when we have an audited number.
Okay. Anybody else want to ask questions? Council member Jensen.
I have a follow-up on that and then something completely different. As I understand, the three point six million that's in the category that we're talking about, it's an estimated number that is predistributed based upon our reserve. It could end up being zero. You have estimated it at three point six, correct?
That's correct. If our revenues suddenly tailed off and we didn't have any revenues in, in the, for June or, or the rest of this month, then we would have, this number would definitely change.
My point is that it's an estimate and nothing else.
That's correct.
The second completely, not totally completely different, but different direction. Hypothetically, if one were to treat our capital improvement projects, as Ms. Pravetti just suggested, as another liability, just like OPEB pension is a liability, has anyone ever considered the hypothetical of, let's say, we discussed earlier, that we need seven hundred thousand dollar ongoing commitment to bring our PCI to seventy? If we get our PCI at seventy, we now have the benefit of presumably measure B dollars to spend at our discretion, for example, school busing, pedestrian bicycle improvements, whatever it may be that, that goes above and beyond repairing streets. Hypothetically, if we were to make that investment, the seven hundred thousand dollars, imagining it's like an investment in a pension, what kind of savings could we realize or what benefits could we realize in our transportation and capital improvement budget that might free up dollars from our general budget for things like pension and OPEB? Has anyone done that kind of analysis?
So there, to answer your question specifically, nobody has done that exact analysis. I think there's, there's a lot of push and pull as we're going through and creating the budget. As, as we've gone through street maintenance discussions with the council over the years, we've talked about how it's, it's cheaper to maintain streets in good condition than it is to bring them up from a poor condition. So the more investment we can do there, the longer term we have, the longer we have savings, the more savings we have over time because we've got, kept our infrastructure in good shape. That being said, the tough decisions, whether you're a town making budget decisions or a homeowner making budget decisions on, on whether to paint your house or when to paint your house, are tough decisions to make with trade-offs along the way. And so it becomes a prioritization effort. We, we rely on the council's direction through our, our strategic goals to set those priorities. And we try to bring forward what our best recommendation, our professional recommendation is to you on how to use the scarce resources that we have. If there's other opportunities to bring additional resources in, for instance, through other sources of funds for, from, from measure B in the future, we certainly bring, consider that in the, in the calculations. We try to get our projects with small town investments to a point where we can maximize the use of other dollars in the future so that we have less investment in the future. So we're, we're, we try to be strategic about how we do that. And then I think the council saw the need as well as, as we continue to, to struggle with these, with these competing needs by bringing, bringing forward or authorizing the, the sales tax measure that will be coming forward so that we can have a little bit of relief from some of this pressure that we're experiencing with, with all of these competing, competing needs.
Follow-up?
Go ahead.
Mr. Morley, I appreciate your answer. I recognize that this is all a balancing process. I recognize that council sets priorities. So let's hypothetically, for Mr. Morley, Mr. Conway, or Ms. Pravetti, assume that for me as a councilperson, my priority would be to get our streets to seventy so that I could get the measure B dollars and so I could experience more savings for my capital improvements and that, that might allow me to do other things, whether that be pension or OPEB, whether that be something else in the budget, downtown revitalization because our sales tax is down. Let's assume my priority is not to put all, all of our money into OPEB pension. Let's assume my priority is PCI. Has anyone looked at that as a way of freeing up budget dollars for council decisions on how they might want to use those dollars? And let's say I convinced four other people that that was a good idea, where would I get the money or support or evidence to show that it's actually a good idea?
So I'll, I'll add a little bit more on to the conversation around a seventy PCI and sort of the magic that goes with that. So the latitude that it allows us in, as a capital projects person, I sort of arguing against myself a little bit here, but the latitude that it, that allows us is to be able to move from strictly street maintenance to broader complete streets improvements. So we'll be able, the items that you, that you identified are certainly items that we'd be able to, to consider. But then we'd be shifting those dollars that are formulaic coming our direction from street maintenance to those other priorities. So again, it's a decision on, do we want to take those dollars that we're replenishing out of the general fund out to do complete streets improvements, or do we want to leave them in the street maintenance program to try and maintain that seventy PCI? So there's, there's trade-offs all the way along. Even when you get to that magic seventy, there's a trade-off of whether, whether you can retain that seventy if you divert some of those dollars to non-pavement complete streets elements.
Council member Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, thank you, staff. The, the answers to the council's questions is very helpful. And what I'm finding is that in years past, I, I looked at the budget and basically I looked at all these numbers and just saw, you know, basically just went through them and looked at them. I find that this council and the staff is digging down deeper and I find it very helpful given our pension issues, given our measure B issues. So within that context, I'm looking at the chart on page A nine, the one that Ms. Sayak had been focusing on. And I have a question and then I think a statement. As I understand, your six thirty nineteen, four million four hundred and eighty-six thousand, is that an anticipated amount of money that we would have at the end of our fiscal year two thousand nineteen?
And if you go to page C dash twenty-seven, you can see some real detail behind that. We have a schedule of our fund balance reserves on page C twenty-seven. And you can see that we actually, instead of describing that, we'd say other on page A nine, but you can see that it says available to be appropriated. Do you see that line?
I do, I actually have it circled on my page.
Yes. So that was, I mean, that is our money that we have estimated to be available to go into one of these other reserves that are, that are below, below that.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in listening to staff and listening to council, it seems to me that A nine with the explanation of C.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Might become very important. And it might become very important in the sense that we, as the priority setters, may want to reexamine the line items in this chart because they, we may or may not want to, I don't know, keep five hundred and sixty-two thousand in the open space reserve. I mean, I think the open space reserve is really cool. But it may be that saving seven and a half percent interest is cooler. And it may be helpful, put aside, it may be helpful. It would be helpful to me if I understood this chart better and if I had the opportunity to reexamine whether at this juncture and with the reality that we have in these days, these line items are, and the amount of them are our priorities at the current time. And that would give us the opportunity to say, okay, what are we going to use our other for? Do we need it? Should we, do we need it? Should we use it for capital improvement projects? What is the amount that we need for the streets? What's going to happen if we don't have that money? I find myself needing more information. And from all these pages of questions I brought here, it seems to be coming back to A nine.
So one option for, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, one option for the council consideration, you know, if there is interest in digging down deeper into page C twenty-seven, we would recommend that we handle that in the fall after we have a better handle of how, how the year is actually ending. And I think again, it, it all comes back to priority setting, et cetera. So I can work with the staff to determine when would be an appropriate time to have that discussion because you're right, some of these are older funds and maybe our goals or priorities have shifted and changed. But I think having an explicit discussion about some of these is probably a healthy thing to do. And, you know, we would welcome the community input as well. But I, I would hesitate for us to stall on our budgeting process because we really do need to get to the business of providing service to the town starting July one. But I can work with the staff and work with the mayor to see when we could calendar that discussion. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Back to the budget stabilization and then the catastrophic reserve funds. I've been on this council, this is my eighth year, and I don't recall us ever needing to tap either of these funds. Is that correct?
You are correct.
And do we have any information about the last time that we needed to tap either of these funds?
I can say that in eighteen years, we've never, we've never had to go there. And that's a good thing. I mean, the town's been fortunate, but we have not had, we've always kept, those reserves have remained intact.
Go ahead.
Which is a great segue into my next point. Money half, halves itself every twenty years and you've been here. Money halves itself every 20 years and you've been here almost 20 and hopefully you will be here for 20, couple more awards in your future. But that 10 million in 2001, when you got here, in 2020, it will be worth 5 million. So to me, it's a catastrophic failure or, how can I put this in terms of what the word actually means? It's a catastrophe not to use that money to save more money. When Mr. Keen sent in his letter, I agree with what Mr. Andrews said, where you can accelerate amortization and you can add 300 or 400 a year and cut a 20 to a 30 or whatever. That's brilliant. But what Mr. Keen was trying to illustrate is how could we add an additional 6 million now potentially to the 3 million something that we have and we would get 5 million back over the next five years, get that immediate return as opposed to leaving money essentially dead in these two funds. I understand his council policy and I understand the logic of having the 90 days and I understand how fortunate we are to have that and other communities don't have that. But I'm looking at this thing and I think many members of the community are looking at this and we're going, gosh, this is just opportunity lost sitting here. And if we are going to immediately pay ourselves back the tune of a million bucks a year by investing another 6 million or something now, assuming Mr. Keen's analysis is correct or some analysis is correct, it seems to me that it's worth exploring because I don't, excuse me, I mean, we never know when a catastrophe will come, but odds are it's not coming and we have dead money sitting here year after year. And if we could pay it back within five years, well, chances are if a catastrophe does come, then we're still paying ourselves back anyway to that fund. So can you comment on some of those thoughts?
I'll start and then I'm sure our other team members will have things to add. I can appreciate that, you know, the viewpoint that this might be seen as dead money or money that's not really working for the town. But when you just look around the Bay Area, there was a city, I think it was Maraga or, you know, one of the cities up in Alameda County, they had a huge sinkhole and all of a sudden they were at the brink of bankruptcy because they had nothing set aside. You look at the city of Santa Rosa, Petaluma, the cities that were engulfed in fire, no one predicted that, you know, that fire would happen. You look at earthquakes that have happened, floods. We are very vulnerable being so close to the wildland interface. And as your town manager, I would be very cautious about dipping into those. We're just a wildfire away. And I know our residents are paying more attention and we're all trying to do our best to protect our assets and protect our community. But when it happens, it happens and it happens big. We survived Loma Prieta and none of us were here, maybe Joel remembers, but I imagine at that point, we did have to dip into some kind of fund to pay for those things. We gave breaks on building permits. We did a lot of things to help our community get back on our feet, to help the business district get back. In those days, we had redevelopment. We don't have redevelopment anymore. So if we hit that catastrophe, you know, it's going to be rough on us, you know, and we would just be pulling money from everywhere. We're probably still going to be pulling money, you know. Almond Grove might be shut down or, you know, put on hold. We might have other commitments that we have to essentially suspend if we have to address something. So I recognize the hesitancy and the challenge of seeing money just kind of sitting there year after year, but I just, I think we really have to be aware of our environment and how precarious our location is. So that's just our professional perspective. Again, you are our council and guiding us in terms of policymaking, but just looking around what happened last year, it's, it could be a very scary time. Thank you.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
And thank you, Ms. Privetti, for the explanation because I think it's important to hear that viewpoint because there have been call, I mean, being a member, former member of the Finance Committee, there's been calls out by the other, the citizen members and the public to try to do something with all these reserves and this dead money. And as we know, we have these dedicated sources and we have to have this piggy bank because of the, what you just stated. And after your explanation, I'm starting to think, well, maybe we need more. But we'll leave it at that for now. So thank you.
Councilmember Specter, I think I saw your head next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that listening to Ms. Privetti and listening to the Vice Mayor is very helpful and consistent with the fact that I believe that the chart on A9, not just the chart, but the thoughts and the financial thinking behind the numbers needs to be reexamined because things have changed. And I will say that I don't know remember when, but there was some point in my past on the council where that budget stabilization reserve looked mighty, made me feel mighty secure. I'm not, I understand staff is saying that we should not slow the budget process down. The budget needs to be approved, needs to be approved in June, so on July 1, we can start our new fiscal year. And so we should wait until the middle of, somewhere between 18 and 19. I get that and I'm not sure that I disagree, but it is uncomfortable for me to be approving a budget that has expenditures that I don't think are as important or critical to the town of Los Gatos as the ones that we, that we should be making.
I think Councilmember Jensen was next.
I just wanted to do an overview of the process the town expects us to go through, including timing of the questions that have been raised. So if I look at the staff report, it says, quote, "consider," unquote, "these budgets." Doesn't say take an action on them. I realize that you anticipate bringing a resolution back. So are you just taking notes on comments to bring a resolution back or are you looking for motions on any particular thing? That's the first part.
So if the council would like to modify any of the recommendations, then we would recommend a motion so that way there's at least a majority of you. So for example, if you said, "We want to defund a particular capital program and add that 700,000 to street maintenance," then we would come back to you in June with those recalculations, you know, and you would be able to adopt it. If you wanted to do some other modification to any other line item, you know, we would need to have that direction from you. As I'm hearing the conversation, it's clear that we have more kind of longer-term strategic discussion ahead of us, but tonight, we're looking really more at the mechanics of what are our priorities, what do we need to spend money on for 18, 19, knowing that should we have a surplus, that you'll have another opportunity to distribute those funds.
Can I follow up on that?
Please.
I appreciate that. What is, as you listen to the discussion, which I would listen to it as saying there is some desire to look at the reserve waterfall, as Mr. Conway is calling it, and change that potentially, either through the Policy Committee, through budget discussions, et cetera. What would you say the correct time to look at that is if it's not tonight? And when would be the opportunity for the council to reconsider the, quote, "waterfall," unquote, if the council would determine even before that 3.6 million or whatever it is, zero, is determined, you know, when you do your numbers? If the council wanted to change those, that reserve funneling prior to that, when would we do that? So what is your notion of the time when these discussions would take place?
The earliest we would be ready would be in about October, mid-October, when we have our first quarter numbers available for council. You typically do a first quarter budget report, so we could certainly work with the Policy Committee on the general fund reserve policy and talk through what those different options might be. And then at that same time, I would say we should bring back A9 and C-27 to see if there might be other reallocations that council might be interested in doing. So we could do it fairly soon in the fall. And Mr. Conway may wish to add something.
Yes. So I would envision that what would happen is we'd do our first quarter budget report. It would be mid-October of 2018. At that time, we would have the actuals finalized for this fiscal year, 1718. And the current reserve policy that we're working with right now will put all of these, that 3.6 million in its proper, in its proper spot. Let's say a majority of that would go in the capital improvements reserve. Then if we had, in that intervening time, some discussions through the Finance Committee and the Policy Committee, et cetera, to reserve, to change our waterfall and how those monies are allocated, then we would then make those decisions with those actual balances that we have. Now, that 3.6 million dollars is all going to find a home and we'll know what the home is in the fall. And then if there's a redirect of those monies, it can be done anytime after, from the first quarter budget through the mid-year or any of those times, council could do a formal resolution and move monies around according to the new priorities that council has determined are the best way to allocate those. So I think it's very doable in the next few months.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Conway. To staff, would it be possible to approve the proposed budget on the condition that the information and the decisions that Mr. Conway just described would be coming back to us? Because as I see it, we approve the budget and there's 3.6 million dollars in excess. It goes to capital improvement and Almond Grove, I'm just making stuff up, and then it's spent before it comes to us. Could we eliminate that eventuality or not?
Well, first of all, I don't believe that that money will be spent because we really won't determine where it went, where its home was until probably mid-September. So it won't be spent. Rest assured that-
But would it be spent before it comes back to the council, which I hear staff say in October, mid-October, November, something like that?
I would really doubt that we would have an opportunity to spend it in the intervening time because we really won't, we'll be getting our CAFR done in that September timeframe and then we'll have those amounts. We'll bring them forward in the first quarter budget report and then council can give us further direction if there's a reallocation.
Putting aside the CAFR, there are other line items here that might be spent before it gets back to us. Maybe not, I don't know.
I don't believe that. You can look, if you, if they were anticipated to be spent, there, we would see, and I don't know, Gita, you could-
On C-12 would be a better-
C-12, you'd see if we anticipate using any of those. So if we look at C-12, we would, well, C-12 doesn't give this, give us the detail we need. But typically what we do is we would show use of those reserves and I'm looking at, I am looking at C-25.
I'm sorry, C-23, if you look at-
23.
Yes, C-23.
C-23.
Yes.
And we show in 1819 that we'll be utilizing some of our capital reserves and the open space reserve is untouched, the sustainability reserve has not been touched, it will not, it's not scheduled to be touched, neither are the authorized carry forward or the compensated app, none of those are touched. The only ones that are affected are the capital and strategic priorities reserves. So those will be intact.
Thank you.
Councilmember Saak was next.
Okay, so this is kind of a, I'm changing topics, so do you want to see if there's any others that still stay with this? It appears that you may have a take-
Okay, let's, Councilmember Jensen.
My question is, what if this council were to make a motion, someone on this council were to make a motion to approve the budgets that have been submitted with the specific direction and part of the motion that in September or whenever it is, prior to any anticipated overages or, quote, "other" as indicated in Table A9 or C-27 or C-23, be allocated or spent, that that comes back to the council for consideration of distribution of those extra funds into a, an existing reserve or perhaps a different reserve? Would that protect that fictional 3.6 million dollars and still approve the budget?
Thank you, and that's a great question. And one of the kind of technical difficulties we have with that is that our auditor is, I hate to give you that answer, but our auditor is only going to let us find a home for this money as of the reserve policy that was in effect prior to June 30. So it'll go in according to our reserve policy, it'll go into, you know, we'll report back, here's our actuals and here's where the money, here's all the reserve status, here's where everything ended up. And then council will have an opportunity at that point in time to say, okay, we understand the reserve policy, put the monies in their, in the waterfall according to our existing policy that was there as of June 30. Now we would like to reflect and change those around and that can be done by a formal resolution of council, but it would, it would happen next fall, it would just be done. Okay, let's say that all that 3.6 million went in, into the capital reserve, council could then say, the next meeting, we would like a resolution moving that money to another committed use. And that would definitely be possible.
What you're saying is that the council would have to take retroactive action-
Yes.
-to move that money once it got put in, take proactive action to change the reserve policy-
Yes.
...et cetera, but cannot do that now.
It's very difficult to do that now, yes.
But we could put into a motion words to the effect that that was going to happen, correct?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Saak.
So you're saying the investment, reserve policy as of June 30. If we were to change that before June 30, that's what would guide these future funds?
That is correct.
And with that reserve policy, that would have to come before the full council?
Yes, would have to be approved by the full council, yes.
Okay. And could you do, okay, so that was my first question. And then could I ask my just random question?
I think we approved it two hours ago, right?
My other question, I'm learning so much every time I open these budgets. So we have all these operating grants in the police department and I was just curious what they were and why some are zero and, but, but have been funded in the past. So I was just curious. Specifically, I'm curious about the domestic violence and why, and if there's any opportunities to, are these grants that are given to us and are there opportunities to pursue these so that we can continue to help communities, community members?
Thank you. Mike D'Antonio, Support Services Captain. So a lot of those grants are grants from previous years that we had the opportunity to participate in and moving forward, those grants weren't available for. So specifically for the domestic violence grant, that was a grant that we had the opportunity to partner with Nextdoor Solutions and actually have an advocate housed at the police department on a part-time basis to assist with our domestic violence advocacy group. So as those grants become available again, then we would absolutely put in for them.
And then a follow-up, if you could just, so the ones that does have funding is our BSCC. And if you could just explain, well, what does that do?
So the BSCC grant is an opportunity that was received just this last fiscal year and it covers specific areas that we can expense money in and it can continue into the years until it's completely expended. We can get to you those four specific areas that those address that we selected.
And for the record, Heather, give us your name.
Heather St. John, Police Administrative Assistant.
Okay, so I don't need to know the specifics, but I mean, just by the, it says, it's described, positive outcomes between municipal law enforcement and high-risk populations. If you could just give me a general, well, what does that mean? Are we helping, are we helping our homeless population or are we helping? Just give me a sense of what it is that we're doing with this money.
So that specific grant is going to be focused on, it is for our homeless population, it's for our mental health and for high-risk youth offenders.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you. Totally change, go ahead and do like Ms. Hayok, totally change the topic. I'm looking at capital improvement, page C-46, 47. This is the, our property on Main Street. And I just want to make sure if we approve this, as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, as I understand it, we, we town will own the property, but there will be no specific plans to build- town will own the property, but there will be no specific plans to build a garage or a, or below-market-rate housing?
That's correct.
Okay. So we own this piece of land that has street parking on it now. I think one of the council members, maybe Mr. Leonardis, raised the question about other parking garages, and you answered it in an email, I believe, to all of the council members. The question would be, the answer raised the issue, or part of the answer included reference to Morgan Hill and to Campbell. Does anybody know how much the Campbell garage cost, how much the Gilroy garage, or Morgan Hill garage cost, and where the money was obtained?
So the, as I recall, the Campbell garage was in the range of $9 million sometime ago, 20, 20-ish years ago. The Morgan Hill garage more recently was in the range of $15 million. The Morgan Hill garage was leftover RDA dollars, and I'm assuming that the Campbell garage was the same.
All right, well, that's unfortunate. So if we have, if the town now owns this flat piece of dirt or pavement that can now park cars at grade, any thoughts about where we could get the monies if we wanted to go forward with a garage?
I wish we had that magic pot of money for you for not only a garage, but also for pensions and street maintenance, but we're basically dipping into that same, same source, so we have not identified construction money for a garage.
And the, I guess the real question is, I didn't think we'd be able to do this from our surplus, since we're looking at $30 million. Would, would be, we be looking at something like a bond or some type of process like that?
So a bond would provide, would provide you money upfront, but you would have to pay the bond back over time, so you still need that, that long-term source of funds, and at this point, I think that gets us back into the circle that we've been talking about.
We had to add another line item to that chart. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. So back to the point that was just discussed about the parking garage. I do recall it coming in the manager's memo last week, and I think the Morgan Hill garage was about 12 million bucks, and the Campbell garage in $2,001 was like five to seven million dollars or something like that. But if we were to build the garage and then charge for the parking in the garage, we can pay back the bond, so it'd pay for itself. Is that not a correct assumption?
So I think that's probably a pretty aggressive assumption without incorporating into, in a discussion on parking throughout the downtown, with the idea that having paid parking in a garage by itself where the rest of the parking is free might not be as attractive. One of the good things that, that the, sort of forward-looking things that the council has in front of them in this budget is a look at, a holistic look at downtown parking that will be able to do that analysis and to provide us some recommendations on what, what is the parking need in, in the downtown, and what the costs of the various potential solutions might be.
And, and I would just add that the rating agencies and the ultimate investors will see that we don't have a history of a dedicated parking revenue source from whether it's, you know, paid parking or whether it's from garage parking, and so that would then extrapolate into probably a higher cost of funds. At some point, if the town does move forward with some type of comprehensive review that incorporates a dedicated stream in the future, that is something that the credit agencies and ultimate investors would look at as a potential source of repayment on bonds. Otherwise, it would have to be a general fund guarantee of some sort.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the explanation on that. And then Councilmember Jensen brought something up earlier about the CPI and obtaining the Measure B funds, and it piqued my interest in knowing what our current CPI is. PCI, Consumer Price Index. It's getting late.
Thank you, Lisa Peterson, Town Engineer. So our current PCI is a 66 to a 67.
And a follow-up question, what would it take financially to get it to 70%? Have we ever done, I, I know we've talked about it in the past in these meetings, but do you know off the top of your head how many dollars it would take to get it to 70%?
So for the next five years, we would have to increase our investment by $700,000 per year.
So you're saying about three and a half million more dollars over five years to get it to 70, and it would not be able to be done all in one or two years?
I, if we put more money into it, we could get up there. I think it's about $2 million, we could get up to a 70, but then, again, we need to keep in mind that we have to, in order to keep the PCI at 70, we also have to increase our investment ongoing.
Okay, thank you for that answer.
Okay, let me ask another, different subject question. Starting with A3, you have the number of town employees, and you go, you know, we're at 148 on that's page A3. Then on, on A11, you have a little more of a, of a breakdown where you talk about non-department hourly employees, and we're talking, we're at 12.3 extra this year, and next year we're going to be at 10.2, so we've reduced some. What's, what's interesting is this showing of town employees doesn't really show the extra employees on it, and I'm wondering, are we lower or much higher on extra employees than, you know, other points on this curve?
So, may I just refer you to page C-46 where it shows the five-year history of the full-time employees and hourly, the hourly employees, and departments like parks and public works and library depend on hourly employees. So if you go C-46, you see the level of hourly employees during the last five years.
They're expressed in total hours, total budgeted hours.
So it shows them going down a little bit, sort of more or less continuously.
Yeah, there's been a trend to reduce that.
And so if we had a downturn in, in our, you know, economy or whatever, our, our revenue for whatever reason, is, is it your thought that that's the first place we would lose employees, is out of the temporary ones?
Not necessarily, you know, downturns bring a lot of different challenges. I think we would look at where we might have vacant positions and whether or not we would put a freeze on that vacant position and wait to fill it. Sometimes with a downturn, activity levels go down, although in this town, my imagination is that the building division would, just by way of example, would still be busy. But what we've done in other downturns and other communities is that, say, for example, we did have a vacancy in a building inspector, rather than filling it, we might augment with contract resources, so that way we don't incur other obligations with that staffing, but we're able to still continue to provide service. You know, ultimately, we might be looking at service cuts, so it might be that we reduce library hours, and so then we might be looking at reducing some of these hourly rates, but that would be a whole policy discussion that we would want to have with you, you know, and again, I think the directors did an outstanding job this year to really look at their budgets in totality and really think about succession planning and retirements that might be coming up, and rightsizing their organizations to meet those service delivery and make sure that structurally they're going to be able to hire the right position for the right job. So there are some shifts, but most of those are cost-neutral, and hopefully we won't get to a downturn because those, those can be very painful conversations for all of us, but everything would be on the table at that point.
I guess I'm trying to understand why we have some we call town employees and other we don't. The ones that are on the, on the extra list that we aren't calling town employees, why do we categorize them that way?
It's, it's more for tracking that they're hourly. There are certain rules for the state of California that require us to track their hours in a particular way. There are certain thresholds that then require us to pay benefits, so we do have to track the, the work of, of those employees in a separate way. You know, when we commit to adding a full-time equivalent employee, then they're fully loaded, they're in our base budget, they're in the financial forecast. So we, we try and be creative and leverage our resources. I think the, the trend we're seeing is that we're able to find efficiencies with our full-time equivalents, so we have less need for hourly. The other challenge with hourly is that because it's a flexible workforce, they stay for a couple months and then they're gone, we have to go through a whole recruitment again, we have to train them. If they stay for two months, they're gone, we could keep going through these due loops. So, you know, we're really trying to figure out how do we as an organization provide service, make sure we've got the right staff doing the right work, and not leave ourselves vulnerable.
We do use hourly employees for some specific work at times, so in the parks side, we have a heavier workload in the summer, so we'll, we'll increase our hours for the summer months and not, not have that ongoing annual obligation. So it allows us a little bit of flexibility in, in that, in those ebbs and flows of the, of the heavy work, work timeframes. In addition, for instance, in Almond Grove, because of the scope and the, and the size of that project, a big project coming at us in a short period of time, we're able to bring on an extra engineer to help with the delivery of that project using a part-time hourly employee versus having, having to bring somebody on for, for full-time, long-term, without having a, a sure future of what they're going to be doing.
And if, if I could just add one more element, and apologies, the graph should have said FTEs, full-time employees, but the, the takeaway from the graph is that unlike a lot of our resident municipalities, this organization has basically maintained a structure that's 20% below the height and yet is maintaining a very high level of service. If we were to head into an economic downturn, which most of the prognosticators think will happen sometime in the next five years, this is why staff advocated and supported council's decision to move forward with the sales tax measure, and this also circles back to the earlier discussions about why you maintain a budget stabilization reserve.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not familiar about the process of a, specific process of a government budget. So when we say we have X number of hourly employees and X number of, you know, full-time employees, are we talking about actual people who work or are there like placeholders for future or other employees?
These represent the hourly, the hourly, the hourly budgets. When we have a budget for hourly employees, those are actual people, it's just we quantify them in total hours, so some folks may work 20 hours a week, others may work 15 hours a week, but they, these are, these are people that we, we, that we have on as employees, but they're very, but they are temp hourly.
But putting aside the hourly, what about when we see a chart, the town of Los Gatos has 150 employees, are those 150 people who are here and working, or are they like placeholders?
No, they are here working.
Okay.
Well, and not necessarily-
There might be, there could be vacancies. I mean, vacancies do occur, but in an ideal scenario, they're all here working.
That's, you know, there was one question that came in by email was why is there some uncertainty on, on salaries, and that I assume was because-
Vacancy savings.
-vacancies, you never know, you have to budget, you know, the, you have to budget the full everybody hired, but that's never the case. People leave in the middle of the year, you have gaps for a certain amount of time, so you have, you have an uncertainty of what actually happens versus what you budgeted.
Yeah, we, in the 18 years I've been, during our, during the real bad recession year, we had virtually no vacancies, no one left, there was no, there was nothing happening, so, but we have had years where we've had virtually no vacancies, but we've had other years where we've had vacancies, so it's very, it's, it's dynamic.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Leonardis?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. The hour is getting late, and as I sit here longer, my mind wanders, and I just thought of something. So, back to this catastrophic reserve, we talked about the event of a wildfire. Is there any way the town would be able to participate in some kind of an insurance policy that would cover us for like $10 million in losses or whatnot, instead of having a catastrophic reserve fund of X dollars?
So we, we do have insurance covering our facilities if they were to burn or be earthquake, so all of this building and all of our buildings are insured for their value, but insuring our budget amount and lost dollars amount, no, I know of no insurance that would do that, that would allow us to pay out other claims or to do other things when our revenues would go down, because that's usually what happens during a catastrophe. Your revenues all go down, and I don't know of any, you know, loss of business that allows that for a government, but we could certainly look into it.
Follow-up. It, it raises an interesting question because, you know, when a business like a restaurant burns down, they have, of course, the building gets rebuilt and the equipment gets replaced, but there's also the loss of revenue they get reimbursed for. So if there's something like that for a government entity, that would be interesting in, instead of, or any other mechanism, instead of just having that pile of cash sitting there. Again, because it's in relationship not to the event happening or not, or, or any of that, it's, it's about just having money sitting there, not getting a very good return, and it halves itself, and if the event never comes, then it's a very expensive insurance policy over time. So perhaps there's an alternative, is what I was thinking.
You do in effect have that insurance policy, and that, most of the catastrophes I've been involved in, you do have FEMA or other state relief, and so eventually, the local government does get paid back, maybe not all, but a tremendous amount, but it's that first 90 days, 120 days, whatever it is, before a declaration's made and there is actual relief. That's the period of time when you, you don't get reimbursed, but, and as far as if that's available on a private market, I don't know.
Thank you.
I think we're out of questions. Would anybody like to make a motion? Councilmember Jensen?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the presented and proposed capital improvement and general budget that we have before us tonight, and that before, whenever it is appropriate for the council to consider the allocation of the estimated extra funds, other funds, I'm going to say in A9, C-23, and C-27, that staff comes back to council with an indication of how those have been allocated under our current reserve policy and give council the opportunity to examine whether it wants to change that reserve policy or, and/or reallocate those funds.
Okay, would anybody like to second that motion? Vice Mayor Leonardis?
Second.
Councilmember Spector?
I'm going to support the motion, but I would be more comfortable with my support if there were more parameters placed upon when the council would have this information before us so that we could reexamine our priorities.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
My understanding from listening to staff is that that would be, the earliest would be September, when the numbers are reconciled, or early October when we're getting our first quarter report. Is that correct?
We have just huddled, and we are now saying most likely that we'd be most comfortable early November, first meeting in November, because of just of the timing of-
Let me, let me, let me do my motion this way. It'll be exactly the same, but that that reconsider, reconsideration come once the numbers have been determined in the year-end and that we're getting our first quarter evaluation that was discussed by staff earlier in October, the first meeting. After that, we would expect to see the explanation and the opportunity to reallocate or, or change the reserve fund waterfall.
Is that change okay with the second?
Yes.
So let me just clarify, so the money that we're talking about going down the waterfall, it's not been programmed, it's not like it's going to go out anywhere if we don't hurry up and grab it, right?
No, because until we know what the amount is, we, we can't, we, until we have, we have a solid number, we don't spend, we don't spend it.
And, and would it get programmed without the council's review of it?
The only way that those reserves get, you remember when I showed you that schedule, it said the amount available to be appropriated? The only- The only body that can appropriate that money is the five council members.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further, Vice Mayor Leonardi.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. So just one other comment. There was discussion earlier about buckets and perhaps having the policy committee look at some of these buckets that may or may not have been sitting there with money in them for many, many years, untouched. And perhaps there was council direction behind it, but not necessarily council policy. One of the items being brought up was some kind of open space bucket that may have been, may have been sitting there for a long time, that we might not have any use for at this time. So I would wonder what the approach would be to have the policy committee look at some of those buckets and see if some of those policies or lack thereof surrounding them should be changed, and perhaps some of those funds could be utilized for other purposes.
We could certainly do that in advance of the discussion. I think it would be helpful to have some of that. It might be a little bit theoretical, but I think it would just be helpful to get a sense in today's world, and given the trends and things that you're seeing, does it still make sense to have open space acquisition money or, or money set aside in these other purposes? And if not, you know, we could bring forward appropriate resolutions for council changes and make those modifications.
And I think it would be helpful for council to get a history of each of those reserves and why they're there, the history of them. And for instance, the open space reserve, I believe there was a promise the town made that when, that it would be used for open space. So that would, I think, but it'd be helpful for council to get those histories, and we could provide that.
Okay, further comments, questions? I don't see any. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Looks like it passes unanimously. Any other comments from council members? Do you need anything else from us?
No, thank you very much. It's been a great discussion. Thank you.
Okay, well, in that case, we're adjourned.